It is 6:00, and we will call the City Council meeting to order on June 13, 2023. Councilman Herring, are you ready for?
I am.
All right. Prayer and pledge, please.
Joe, rise if you're able to and pray with me. Lord, thank you for this place that we call home. Thank you for the rains you sent us, and thank you for the spirit of community that lives in so many hearts. Thank you for the opportunity to come together, to listen, and to act, and to hopefully reflect your will. Thank you for the gifts that you have given us and the opportunities you've given us in this special place. In your holy name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Joe, and welcome to everybody this evening. We will start off with some announcements.
Thank you, Mayor, and let me second that. Welcome to everyone this evening. Welcome, Mike. Let me see where I can get my announcements out. There we go. We've got a lot going on at the library in the next couple of weeks. I put two weeks on here since it will be another two weeks before we meet again, but we have both kids programs and adult programs. I think they've got something pretty much to cover everybody. And I'll just go through them real quick, and you can follow along up there. We've got kids crafts programs on Thursday, June 15 and June 22, 10:30 and 2:30 p.m. 10:30 a.m. and 2:30 p.m., excuse me. Storytime Monday, June 19 and June 26, and that is 10:00 a.m. Calm in Color Monday, June 19 and June 26 at 10:30 a.m. And Lego Club Monday, June 19 and June 26 at 2:00 p.m. You might need the Calm in Color to keep you calm if you step on a Lego when you're walking around. Family movie Tuesday, June 20 and 27 at 1:30 p.m. Last Chance Forever Raptor show, which is Wednesday, June 21, 10:00 a.m. at The Calo. Last week, we had a magician at The Calo. This week, we have the, well, I guess the 21st, we have the Raptors. I don't know if you've ever seen that show, but it's pretty impressive. A lot of fun to go to, so encourage people to come out for that. Adult programs, we have Author Talk. David Willis, I believe he's there tomorrow at 1:00 p.m. Mystery Fiction Book Club is Thursday, June 15 at 12:00 noon. Craft section is Saturday, June 17. Food for the Soul next Tuesday, June 20 at 4:30 p.m. Native Plant Society of Texas Book Club, June 21 at noon. Movie Chat, June 21 at 3:30. Talking Texas Book Club, Thursday, June 22 at noon. What I'm looking forward to, Stretch and Relax, I did not make the last one, but I know several people did, and I heard good reports on it. So Stretch and Relax will be Saturday, June 24, 10:30 a.m. Great way to start the day. And then Author Talk, June 24 at 2:00 p.m. And then there's a Medicare class for anybody who's looking for information on that, June 26, 12:00 noon, so everybody go, because there's a lot going on over there. All right. Upcoming Parks event, we have, and that will be June 23, which is next Friday? Next Friday. We'll be back at Louise Hayes Park for one of our concerts by the river. We have Landon Miller and Rebecca Lowe. It's country music, and then I don't have a slide for it. But this Sunday, June 19, it's Father's Day, so don't forget that. And Dad's getting free at KSP, the Curville Shriner Park, with the purchase of a child's day pass, so take advantage of that. Two other events. Sergeant Jonathan Lamb over at the Curville Police Department is determined to get everybody in Curville in shape. This is the third, third, I believe, the third one, right. The Third 5K Run Walk starts at 7:00 a.m. at Louise Hayes Park on Saturday, so come on out and run with them. As he said, there's no trophies or anything, so you just have to be aimless for the fun. And then Saturday night, since we work with the Doyle a lot, they have a Blues Festival, the Second Annual Blues Festival, so we encourage people to go out and enjoy that. And then, again, this is another one I don't have a slide for because it's kind of hard to do that, but want to remind everybody in Comanche Trace that we will be, the city will be doing smoke testing tomorrow and Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. each day. And smoke testing is when we put smoke into the underground sewer systems and check and see if there's any leaks, and if there are, they smoke up through. So don't worry if you see smoke coming up. Earth is not on fire. We're just running a test, but just be prepared for that if you see it. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Stuart. I tell you what, there aren't many towns our size that offer what we offer. It is fantastic, so.
That's true.
Counsel, anyone have something they would like to mention?
Shelley, is Karen Guerrero on the visitors?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then I don't.
All right. Okay, we have a proclamation for the Great Outdoors Month. Am I giving this to Parks and Rec people? City of Proclamation. Whereas the city of Curville is blessed with outstanding outdoor recreation and leisure opportunities for our citizens and visitors to enjoy while participating in safe and healthy fun with their family and friends, and whereas outdoor activity promotes a healthy body, mind, and spirit, and is touted by health organizations and medical professionals as a remedy to the adverse effects caused by lack of physical activity and too much screen time. We'll all agree with that, right? And we're guilty, too. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activity by providing spaces such as sports fields, hike and bike trails, lakes and rivers, swimming pools, and many other outdoor areas designed to promote active lifestyles, encouraging citizens and visitors to get outdoors, be active, play. And whereas the President of the United States has designated June as National Great Outdoors Month, the city of Curville, Texas, County of Kerr, recognizes the benefits derived from the city's generous inventory of outdoor parks, activities, and resources. Now, therefore, Judy Iner, Mayor of the city of Curville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 as Great Outdoors Month. In Curville, Texas, and urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the importance and the value of parks, trails, and other outdoor amenities and activities, and further encourage citizens of Curville to visit area parks, rivers, and trails, and become more familiar with the parks and recreation programs and amenities available outdoors to all residents. And I have signed this. So we thank you guys for what you do for us, and with the river trails that we have, the beautiful parks, 26 of them, there's no reason why any of us should not be out enjoying them. So it's great. Please, will you introduce yourselves and tell us what your role is with Parks and Rec? And we'll start with the leader down here.
Ashley Boyle, Director of Parks Recreation.
Rosa Ledesma, I'm the Recreation Manager.
Lisa Nyes Allen, I'm the Chair of the Parks Board.
Deidre Floss, I'm the Assistant Director of Parks and Rec.
Tina North, I'm the Office Manager for Parks Department.
You guys have any advice, anything you want to share?
Lisa, I know you do.
I mean, I just encourage everybody to get out. A lot of people don't realize the resources that we have in our parks. I mean, Curville Shriner Park now has 15 miles of unique trail out there for hiking, biking, mountain biking, and I really encourage you to get out there. Singing Wind's going to become a really great park in the next couple of years, and, you know, a lot of opportunities for all ages to play, so.
Well, and Singing, how many, is it a mile trail, or is it longer than Singing Wind?
Singing Wind's got a whole new plan, not just trails. So skate park, bike park, enduro line, squiking trail, disc golf, all that, so.
Well, we are blessed to have you guys in charge, and we are so blessed to have all that we do have here, so we all should say a prayer of thanks, so. You want some pictures? All right, we'll let somebody hold that. All right, we come to the Visitor Citizens Forum. Shelley, how many do we have signed up?
Yes, ma'am, we have 23.
23. All right. Counsel, if none of you have an objection, I would like to ask that our citizens reduce their remarks tonight to two minutes.
I object to that.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you. And do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes four to one.
Excuse me, Mayor, I want to raise a point of order. Rule 5.3 in our procedure rules talks about the total time limits, and it says that we can only extend time. It doesn't say we reduce time by a majority vote.
I...
So if we're going to extend time, then we do that, but nowhere in our procedure rules does it say that we will reduce time.
Well, I have the, have the council, I'm sorry, agreeing to reducing the time. We are a business meeting, and I know that people have prepared, but because we have so many on the agenda, I would like for us to continue with two minutes, and so that we can get everybody in and not have to be here so long, so.
Well, I raised a point of order on that, so you have to rule a point of order. And just because we have a majority vote doesn't mean we can violate our own procedure rules if it doesn't say we can do that.
Mike, do you have any advice for me here?
Otherwise, we just have to amend our procedure rules, but that's not our agenda.
We're not amending, no.
I don't believe you need to amend your rules. I believe this is a council meeting, and it's up to council to amend the speaker's time as they see fit, and the motion passed.
And it's just for tonight, is what we're doing it for. It's just because we have so many people, so. All right, we will proceed with that.
Mayor, I have a point of order on the table, respectively, so respectfully, so that you need to rule it on that.
All right. Mike, I need advice as to how to handle the point of order. I'm sorry.
Let me just read it real quick. He raised a point of order. You can rule immediately on whether you think that's an appropriate point of order.
Have you read the rule, Mayor?
Well, you just read it, too, yes.
Okay.
Mayor, I don't believe you need to read the rule. I believe he's raised a point of order. You have a right to rule on it immediately, and then let's move.
And that's what we will do, so we are going to proceed with the vote as it was, and two minutes for the meeting. All right? Thank you. All right.
So then my vote will be a no on that. I don't know how you can rule on something if you haven't read the rule, with all due respect.
We will proceed as we have planned. All right, first speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Kim Clarkson, 1228 Lois Street. I would like to start by congratulating you guys for selecting the mayor pro tem last meeting. I think you made an excellent choice. I was sitting at that meeting, and during the discussion that ensued that was led by Councilmember Garcia, however, there were some statements that were misleading or inaccurate, and I want to clarify those. Starting at minute 5832, I quote, we, this is from Councilmember Garcia, "We've always gone into executive session to have an opportunity to discuss in regards to the mayor pro tem." Stated by former Councilmember Delane Ferguson, which I assume you meant not Ferguson, since we haven't had a Delane Ferguson as Councilmember. And then you said Gary Cochran, "We agreed to unanimously by council that the position of mayor pro tem is shared by all members of council, and that it was rotated based on what members were elected to do on a seniority basis." So because of that, I guess about two years ago, there was a departure, and this is quoting, I typed this all up, "from the practice, and I would like for us to get used to doing that, if that's what we're going to do," which I found a little confusing. But with that being said, this motion will be a departure from that practice. So to clarify, we haven't always gone into executive session for mayor pro tem. In January 8, 2020 meeting, Gary Cochran made a motion in an open session and said, "It's my understanding that it's the kind of a tradition that we rotated among council members," and that was his quote. Following that, there, that motion was made, and it passed, and then, gosh, two minutes goes fast. In 2024, or I'm sorry, in May 24, 2022, we did go into executive session, and then in May 23, it was made in an open session. And this is important because the words were used by Councilmember Garcia, saying, "It's unfortunate that we can't have a discussion like we usually do, and it's a departure from our normal practice, and I think it's important to be transparent and use words appropriately and not misstate and make it look like council is making decisions that go against."
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, I'm sorry. And I know that you are going to have to look at your notes, and, but just pull out what's important, and we'll get through all of it.
Jennifer Mashal. I'm just going to try and talk faster. Good evening. I'm here tonight to once again express support for the library. Censorship has no place in a library, and I appreciate that the staff has stood up to the pressure and stress they have dealt with recently. They've received a great deal of criticism and many hateful accusations that are completely undeserved. Everyone I have met or worked with on staff is caring and sincere about their devotion to the community and to literacy. Seriously, thank you for everything that y'all do. The city asked the library advisory board to review its collection development policy, and it has made some suggestions that will be considered for approval in July. There is currently a policy in place to challenge material in the library, and as of today, there have been zero challenges submitted. There's been a lot of talk about protecting children. I also believe in keeping children safe. I take on the responsibility for keeping my kids safe from what I think endangers them. But we all know that parents don't know everything. We can see what books are on a shelf and available, and if there's a book you don't want your child to read, you can stop them. If you don't care to be in charge of your kids in the library, you're not required to use it. If we put the books in a locked room, as has been suggested, how do we protect a child who is nervous about coming out to their community, about their sexuality or their gender, and just wants to read a book written by someone who has gone through something similar before telling anyone? How do we protect a child who has been sexually assaulted and wants to read, speak, or shout in order to not feel alone before they decide to share? How do we make them feel when they see that a book about experiences like theirs and existence like theirs is deemed necessary to be locked away? What have we told them about how our society and our community views about them? I urge the City Council to continue their support of the library. Thank you.
Carolyn Dreyer.
To continue, our wonderful library has been under attack now for nine months. It's been a gestation period full of hate, fear, misinformation, and even threats of violence, all under the guise of protecting our innocent children. Meanwhile, here's what our library staff has been doing specifically for kids in those same nine months. I had a very long list, some of which you can see from the first announcement. There are many kinds of storytimes, for babies and toddlers, for kids three to five, yoga storytime, fire prevention storytime, Qantas for kids, a bilingual storytime, a gingerbread house and spooky cookie decorating for the holidays, Santa Claus, Thanksgiving turkeys, teen gaming, teen tober, a reading month, crafting for a cause, making the world a better place, one craft at a time, art, science, history center storytimes. The Skydome Planetarium Eclipse Party was attended by more than 800 people. In the last nine months, and there's many more, in the last nine months, the dedicated professionals of our library provided thousands of hours of education, entertainment, enrichment, and a safe haven for our children. And in all that time, with all that exposure to the library's contents by thousands of people, young and old, not a single person has filed a formal complaint against a book or activity, not one. So can we please just end this nine-month ordeal and give birth to reason and respect for the people of the library who every day make life better for all of us in this community?
Joanne Levine.
I pass. I pass.
Mike and Jan Pericini.
I hope I did not make your slot of your name.
Good evening. My name is Jan Pericini, and I represent Gunny's Warriors. Since I only have two minutes, I'll try to make it quick. I would ask you all to go to our website, gunnyswarriors.com, and check us out. We're dedicated to the veterans of the Hill Country, so I want to get to what we would like to share with y'all tonight. We are planning a, and I put it on your desk, an event for the whole community out at the Hill Country Youth Center for September 9 through 11. And I don't know if anyone is familiar with Field of Honor, but we will be installing 500 American flags. It's going to be open to the community the whole time. You can purchase a flag to honor or memorialize someone. Our theme this year, this is the first annual, hope to be many more, is honor your hero. So it could be anyone that has positively impacted your life. You can honor them with a flag. At the end of the event, you will get the flag that you've purchased. It's going to be free to the public. We will have opening and closing ceremonies. We will have nonprofits there, kids' activities, bands, food trucks. All the proceeds from this event will go back to community organizations. Gunny's Warriors wants to put this on for the community. We're not taking any of the proceeds. This is to thank you all for your support of our organization. So we, I'm asking, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
I'm Martha Hicks, 922 Cypress, and this is my favorite cohort and the leader of the pack.
Martha, you want to scoot over to the microphone? Thank you.
This is the leader of the pack, Katie Pappas. She got me into this thing to begin with, and here I am, still being silly after all these years. Okay, so we're going to do it again this year. We want everybody to come out. We're giving a special invitation to veterans and a special invitation to our city leaders. We'd like for you to be there. We have some, I have some flyers tonight, and Roman's going to be helping with bike decorating at 8:00 in the morning, so come on out. And you've got anything to say, Katie?
I think we all need the opportunity to celebrate the blessings of liberty that we have in the USA. Happy birthday to the USA on July 4.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm all for having no censorship on reading. I was raised in a household, had no censorship on reading. We all made something of ourselves. I was internationally published by a major publisher at age 34. I was the number one bestselling author at Amazon, or, is it Amazon? In 2017 and 2018, I wrote 25 books, and reading anything when I was a kid prepared me for it. Gave me a nice living. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, y'all. So Jacqueline Hall, 1800 Junction Highway. It's my understanding that the changes proposed by the library advisory board are going to come up, that those changes were voted on in their May 24 meeting, so it's going to come up before y'all, the city council. And I'd like to state the obvious, the proposed changes by the unelected library board is making it harder for parents who are trying to protect their children from obscene material. At this point, I feel like a broken record. Y'all know where I stand on this issue. I believe it's my duty to stand up for the innocence of children. We, the citizens, requested that all references to the American Library Association be removed from our library's policies. That did not happen. Please do not approve the changes that the library advisory board has proposed. As our elected officials, you have the authority to do what is right and remove the obscene material from the kids' section. Please do what's right. Thanks.
Julian Wiggins, 204 Oak Hill Drive. My small-town Carnegie library was my second home when I was growing up. My parents never censored my reading, and I was reading Dostoevsky and Orwell when I was 15. I think I turned out okay. My kids, when I was raising my daughters, I didn't censor their reading. One is an English teacher. The other one has a degree in journalism and rescue star. My granddaughter, who now lives with me, is 16. I don't censor anything she reads or watches. She has a beautiful, kind heart. She's a wonderful person. The words "freedom and liberty" are bandied about quite a lot lately, but I don't feel that it's freedom and liberty when other people decide what I and my family can read.
Susan Summers. I'm here again to stand for the library and for our librarians. I love our library. It's beautiful. It's a wonderful addition to our community, and this is the United States of America. We have freedom of speech, and that's all I have to say.
Here.
My message to the "we, the people" is, first of all, how do you call yourself liberty in action? Liberty in action when taking away people's rights is the opposite of liberty. Next, enough already, please stop. We get it that you don't want to read books about people that may be different from you or about episodes in our history that make you feel bad, so don't read them. No one is forcing you to. Just don't try to dictate what other people may want to read. Instead of making this a more open, tolerant, loving community, this continuing faux outrage is causing division and discomfort or worse, and your complaints make no sense. When I was young, reading Judy Bullock mystery books did not make me a great detective. Reading about the adventures of Marco Polo did not, much to my dismay, make me a great world explorer. Later, as a teenager, reading Gone with the Wind did not make me want to enslave people. Reading Marjorie Morningstar did not cause me to run off to the Catskills to have an affair with a playwright. What all these books and more did do was expose me safely to more adventurous dreams, diversity, and knowledge than a small conservative town could offer in any other way, and I think I turned out okay. Have I mentioned that I have a son who has served almost 20 years in the U.S. military, another son who is a working, thank God, college graduate with a doctorate degree, and I have an honor student grandson, none of whom have been negatively affected by my extensive and diverse reading habits? And their own reading habits, who knows? No one has ever restricted their reading choices. A library is a wonderful place for all to experience learning about new, wondrous, and yes, sometimes scary or uncomfortable things. We need to support libraries and all our nation's terrific librarians that make them that way. We are so lucky ours are the best. My recommendation is you, don't mess this up. Curl up with a good book, maybe something different than you normally read. Nobody's dictating. Choose what you want, and chill. Oh, and...
Joe Rice. I'm sorry if I bit your derm.
No, that's okay. I'm used to it. You know, it sounds like the argument is, I guess we can turn the library into an adult bookstore, and we're good with it. I'm not here to censor anybody. I'm here, what we call censorship? I call it parenting. And so what I'm hearing is that I shouldn't, if I have a problem with material, adult books are fine with y'all in the library, and I have a problem if they're there. So you're warning me to not let my grandkids go there because they could find them. If I had a neighbor that had that stuff, and I'll call it stuff kindly, on their coffee table, I wouldn't let them go over there. Am I censoring my neighbor? Call it what you will, it's good parenting. So I love libraries. I used to hang out in them all the time. I mean, they're quiet, you can read good books. But what we're talking about, and I'm hearing from you, you're telling me anything goes. Well, good for you on that. Well, good for you on that. If you want to open that up to the kids, that they pick up pornography and it wreaks havoc on their lives. But you're telling me that's censorship? Because you don't draw the line anywhere. And so I got the message. The library is not safe for our kids. That's what I'm hearing. And we need to change that. If we're going to have a library for this community, we need to change that. If you have to have those books there, then the librarian is responsible to responsibly give that out to the right age group. If my kids, my grandkids can wander around and pick that up anywhere on a table with a page open with explicit photography in it, which the books that we're talking about, Gender Queer, challenged, it says, content claimed to be sexually explicit. I don't need to look. I'm not interested. Do I hate somebody that, I'm not interested. They can do whatever they want. Anyways, good timing, because I am done. Thank you.
I'm Robin Monroe. I live in Kerrville, Texas. And I came up here to say something. And I think that I changed that when I heard Councilman Herring opening prayer. So I went out and I got my Bible that has been thrown down on the shelves here and said that maybe we ought to ban this book. And so I'm just here to remind everybody in this room that the author of this book is still alive. And the reason you breathe is because he is alive. And I'm just going to say, he has in this book, if you said in your prayer that you wanted to know possibly to do his will, it's pretty easy. You read the book. It's in here. And he does say a lot about children. He loves children. Children are a heritage of the Lord. And he says to those that could cause a child to stumble away from him, away from the truth of who they are and who they can be, that they should tie a millstone around their neck. It would be better for them to be drowned in the sea than the punishment that will come to them. So I'm just here to remind everybody that there is accountability. There is accountability. That's all I'm here for. It's in this book. It's black and white.
Thank you.
Susan Wolf.
Hi, Susan Wolf, Central Texas. I'm here to speak in support of the library, which is publicly funded and not affiliated with a church or a political party and therefore cannot be used to advance a religious agenda. I firmly believe in maintaining an environment where all books and resources remain freely accessible. I thank the librarians for protecting our rights and access to information without censorship or undue restriction. I take responsibility for what my minor child reads. And I believe that's the parent's responsibility, not the librarian's responsibility, not the government's responsibility. And I was also at the Library Board meeting. And I think they made some good changes to the collection policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bethany Puccio.
Bethany Puccio. I'm from Kerrville, Texas. I'm with We the People, Liberty in Action. I'm just going to recap what I said last time. There's a lot of lies being spread. There's no such thing as a banned book in America. You can't ban a book. You can buy a book and read any book that you want, but it doesn't mean it's appropriate in the kids' section. Children are protected under the law. They have the right to protection. It's illegal. If I gave that content outside of those walls, I would go to jail and rightfully so. I read a very small portion of one of the books that is in our library for 12-year-olds, and it's still there. If they're telling you it's not there, they're lying to you. It's on the bookmark that they gave out. And I was accosted in the hallway out here by the police chief and investigated for disorderly conduct. That video of that City Council meeting, if you look it up, it's censored. It's censored. The city censored it. It says if you're not 18, you can't watch it. Because that's the content of the books that we're talking about. We're not talking about adventure books or mystery books. This is illicit sex that children have the right to be protected from. And we have the responsibility to protect them from. Also, I don't remember anyone saying locked doors. We asked that the books be relocated to the adult section. That's not a locked door. That's the adult section. That means that children can peruse the shelves of the library and make selections safely. And if a parent wants their child to get that kind of content, they can go get it for their child. If we can't protect children, what can we do?
Barbara Ferguson.
Barbara Dool Ferguson. I live in Kerrville. You know, it's interesting that we have library sections at all. We have an adult section. We have a young adult section. We have a children's sectional, section. And I'd like to know why we have those sections. Is that censoring those materials? I don't think so. No. We're asking that we move sexually explicit materials that are currently in the children's and the young adult sections into the adult section. That's not censorship. These are ridiculous arguments. And we've heard them over and over again for nine months, and it's ridiculous. Back in April, Languero, during the campaign, said in an open public forum, "It was time to move the books and move on." He was so right. It is time to move the books and move on. It is ridiculous that we are choosing this hill to die on. Currently, our state legislature, our governor, our state representative, our congressmen, our senators have all taken positions that this is not okay to have sexually explicit material available to minors. They passed the law. It is going to affect all our local schools. And the libraries, public libraries, will follow. It will happen. Now, if this is the hill that our library and our City Council want to die on, you're going to end up on the wrong side of the law and be forced to do what you should be choosing to do as the right thing right now. And I ask you, make that choice. Let's just move the books and move on. And we'd all really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl Hitch.
Good evening. Many years ago, children were taught what is healthy touch, good touch, bad touch. They were taught that they had a right to have boundaries and to protect themselves and to know that no one had a right to touch them in a way that they did not want touched. But some of these books are actually showing the kids how to touch other people in a sexual way. And so it's because of these types of books. I agree, we have a wonderful library and librarians. That's not the issue. The issue is protecting the innocence of children, helping them to know how to honor somebody else's body as well as theirs and to grow up into a way to, what is healthy sex? When do you use it? So I agree that the books that have obscene information in them should be put into the adult section and let the parents make that decision. And I thank you for your time. And a silly question is, how many of you needed a book to teach you how to have sex? Thank you.
Thank you.
Marnie Bethel.
Marnie Bethel. Hello. My name is Marnie Bethel. I live in Hunt. And I'm a proud patron of the Buttholesworth Memorial Library. Happy Pride Month, everybody. This is very nice. I am a resident of Kerr County. I vote here. I'm retired here. I'm happy here for the most part. And I would like to just address the level of acrimony and animosity that I'm feeling in this community right now. I'm a mother of two queer children who are brilliant and who are going to change this world for the better. They are both amazing. And I don't impute evil motives to my neighbors. Those of you who don't agree with me in supporting the library, that's your right. That's your choice, absolutely. I don't think you're doing it from a bad place. I may not agree with you, but I don't think you're doing it because you hate me or the library or my children. I wish that you would not impute evil motives to me. I have been to a number of these meetings now with the City Council and with the Library Board. And yeah, just a lot of stuff. And the thing that keeps jumping out at me is that I hear my neighbors speaking about those of us who support freedom to read and suggesting that we have some sort of ulterior motive, that we are groomers, that we want to sexualize children. It's not true. I want to be a mother to my kids, who happen to be a little bit different than some kids. But they have just as much of a right to be children and to be, well, they aren't children anymore, but they had a right to be children. And we all have a right to live in a community that supports who we are, even though we're not all the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Esbenlove.
Thank you for hearing. Thank you. Is it live? Okay. Thanks for the time to express my thoughts. I'm here to agree with the earlier speaker to ask you to turn down, to disapprove these rules that were proposed for the library. Because as I read them, I feel that they are a suppression of free speech. We should be able to openly comment on the books the library is purchasing without there being a war about it or without there being dozens of restrictions on how I can get my comments in. So I think they are a restriction of free speech, which is odd coming from people who are advocating free speech. Secondly, I really believe that that material needs to move to the adult section. Come on, what is the problem with that? Why is that such a crusade? Why is that the hill to die on? What are the intents behind that motive? What is the motive, rather, behind that resistance to putting them where they belong? I firmly believe that it's the parents' choice to shield or not their children from pornography and all sorts of improper information. We censor terrorism. We censor rebellion and tyranny. We have lots of restrictions on those. And this is equally immoral to educate and expose children to things that are just pornographic and completely unnecessary for some ages. So I ask you to get the books moved. I can't imagine that's such a difficult thing. Let the parents decide. These books shouldn't even be in the library to begin with, in my opinion. But if some adults want that kind of material, I guess they can have it. I just don't know why the city feels they are responsible for social engineering and paying for the social reengineering of the sexuality of children. I think it's inappropriate. Thank you.
Carolyn O'Quinn. Carolyn O'Quinn.
Hi. Is that on? I'm Carolyn O'Quinn. I live here in Kerrville. I've come from a family of teachers. And I've been a teacher my entire adult life. I've also been a library user, an avid library user, since I was born. My mother took me to the library before I could walk. And we have always used the library. And I raised my own children going to the library on a regular basis. In all of that experience with schools and libraries, I have never, ever known or heard of a teacher or a librarian who was trying to socially engineer your children or trying to confuse children or, that horrible word, groom children. I don't think that really happens. I think that's propaganda that some politicians have put out there for their own benefit. The other point I want to make is that it's my library too. And I fully support people's desire and efforts to raise children according to their own values. But you can't put that on other people's families. Because it's my library too. So the way that I would want my family to be raised should also be represented in the public library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brent Bays.
Brent Bays, 444 Forest Ridge. I'm not here to talk about the library, so everybody can just breathe easy. I made it three years in honors English using Cliff's Notes. The only thing I read is the Bible and construction code and security code when I'm a securities dealer. Basically, what I want to talk about today is, I want to wish Mr. Hoppy good luck in his new job up there in Frisco. I ran into him in Germa the other day at Al Capoco and wished him that. I did have to say, though, I do have an email that never got answered in about 15 phone calls back in August 16th of '21. And so you can kind of take that off your checklist. That was before I had to sue the city in federal court for violation of my civil rights in regards to one of my buildings. I would like to say this. I strongly suggest that we make interim city manager Kim Beismer the city manager. I've been here for 30 years. I've watched the, and that might be the kiss of death for you, sweetie. I'm sorry. But I've watched the turnstile of city managers come. And we get this big project and we finance it. And we see and pray that it's going to work. And then we come back and we take a 30-year lease on DBAT and turn it into a three-year lease. And so I've been seeing it for some, back all the way to Paul Hoffman back in 2009, when I did an appeal for things that development services did back then. And they fired the city manager over that. So I've got a long illustrious history with city managers. I'd love for us to have somebody that's been here, going to stay here, solid, is not coming in to spend a bunch of money, not trying to pad her resume and move on down the road, and somebody that we can all grow with. And oh, by the way, isn't it interesting how divided we are? This room used to have the city secretary and the city attorney over here and the city manager over there. All of y'all used to sit out here. Pretty soon, you're going to be in the parking lot.
Karen Guerrero.
Good evening, mayor and city council and city staff. Am I loud enough? Is it okay? Yeah, okay. My name's Karen Guerrero, 307 Lakewood in Kerrville. I serve as the president of Kerrville Pets Alive, spoken here many times. And I wanted to share some great things that we're going to provide for the city of Kerrville residents as well as Kerr County pet owners coming up. We are seeing an explosion of litters of animals all over the community. It is a regional problem as well, as well as a national problem for a number of reasons. We have a lack of veterinarians and affordable and accessible spay and neuter and healthcare services for pets. So because KPA is a solution-based organization, we are going to try to chip away at this problem. And first, we will be hosting a pet wellness clinic, which will be on Saturday from 9 until noon at our office at 414 Clay Street. That'll be first come, first served. Dogs on leashes and cats in crates. We think that's really important to get these animals vaccinated and make it affordable. Secondly, we're going to have a junior rescuers camp, which is going to be a youth education camp for animal welfare and animal responsibility. We hope that these kids that come to the camp take that information home to their families. Thirdly, September 30th to October 1st, the most exciting news ever, we will be bringing in a team of veterinarians and vet techs and equipment to our area. A group called Animal Balance will be doing that for us. It's very expensive. It'll cost about $35,000. It's very expensive, it'll cost about $35,000. However, thanks to the city of Kerrville and various foundations that have supported this effort, we're only $9,000 short of our goal. We have committed with that organization to come in, and that'll be, just be amazing to have those animals fixed.
How many animals?
200 in a three-day period. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
George Buridi.
George Buridi, 1616 Glen Road, and yeah, I'm not about the library either right now. So it's just budget stuff. As you guys are heading into what should be the budget cycle, I just wanted to clarify some things, some of which was a, an article written in the, during the campaign season that was a little bit truth-challenged. The, this is mostly to Mr. Harris, because the rest of them have probably looked at the budget a lot more than you have, but in any case, I encourage you to do your own research, because the research being put out isn't exactly accurate. So the couple of trends that have been going on, the property tax revenue in the last two years actually did jump 21% from one year to the next, and you can verify it in each of those budgets. 2022 is page 27, 2023 is page 55. You can do your own research on that. Debt per household is actually 11,000 as confirmed, and that is a standard way of comparing whether you've got a good debt to service rate based on either per capita or per household. So you can do your own research on that. But some of the trends that are a little bit disturbing and need to be addressed, you can't fix them overnight, you won't be able to undo a 21% increase in one year, but our revenues are increasing, our expense is increasing a whole lot faster, just governmental expense. So the gap between the two is widening, which is why the tax revenue has had to increase so much. Some of the things we also aren't reporting is infrastructure maintenance. We have it in our policy that infrastructure is to accrue its expense as it occurs. Streets in particular and buildings are wearing out as we speak. Whether we invest anything in them at that time, they are wearing out, and so we need to report. Thank you for your two minutes.
Sean Borner. Sean Borner.
Good evening. Thank you, mayor and council members, for your service and dedication to our community. I for one really do appreciate your contributions. I'm here to support our library and its policies regarding some of the controversial materials in its collection. From what I've read, I believe the library has taken reasonable steps to accommodate all their users regarding these materials. To our neighbors on the other side of this issue, there's a couple of things to consider. One, just because you say it doesn't mean it's so. In other words, just because you call it pornography doesn't mean it's true. I think there's media out there that every single person in this room would agree is pornography. That's not what's in our library. Second, are you sure that you are not promoting the very materials that you are trying to restrict? If you want to sell a product, you create a buzz, and to create a buzz, controversy helps. That's like marketing 101, and you've definitely created a buzz. I think back to a time in my youth when our church decided to ban a movie. I think it was Monty Python's Life of Brian. Of course, every kid, including a future priest, went to go see it. If you want your kids to be curious about something, make a fuss and they'll go search it out. I remember getting my hands on some controversial books as a teenager, and I didn't need the library's help in getting them. I can only imagine that getting your hands on controversial material now is even easier. I've asserted that you've turbocharged the promotion of these controversial materials in a way that the library never could or would. Therefore, it wouldn't surprise me if every Kerrville kid over a certain age is now quite familiar with these materials because of your inadvertent marketing. Thank you.
That is the end of the speakers.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for working with us and keeping your marks to, your remarks to two minutes. It's very much appreciated, and I had some words that I was going to say about the library because you all have been good and worked with us. I will not reiterate what most of you have already said, and I will save my remarks for later on. We are about ready for a consent agenda, but before we do that, I want to publicly say to Mr. EA Hoppy, thank you. We are going to miss you. We wish you well, but we are going to miss you, and you've done a great job for us. One of the things I've appreciated most is keeping the 2050 plan in front of us and making that our roadmap, and I certainly do appreciate that. Council, anybody have something you want, would like to say? Thank you, EA. We appreciate you.
And thank you for your patience with new people.
So, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, at this point, then, we will move to the consent agenda, and is there anything that any council member feels needs to be pulled?
Mayor, I request a motion for B.
All right. Do we have a motion then for 4A, 4C, 4D, 4E, and 4F?
So moved, mayor.
Thank you. Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes unanimously. Roman, 4B.
Thank you. I've had some, an email exchange with staff about this ahead of time, so I just wanted to kind of bring some of that information to light, not everything that we discussed. I do have a couple of questions that we haven't discussed, just because there aren't anything I think you needed to do a lot of research on, but just a couple of things on the contract portion of this. So I understand from the agenda bill, we do not have a contract from Microsoft yet, and it's my understanding that it's pretty much going to be the same provisions, same, similar language to what we currently have right now, and we're just adding some new features on to it for our operations.
That is correct, sir. Yes. Sorry. Yes, the contract's going to be similar to one that we approved and executed in 2017 to 2020, so it's a three-year cycle, all under the Microsoft umbrella.
Okay. If there's anything that, just because we don't have it in front of us and staff hasn't had the opportunity to review it yet, if there's anything that we haven't expected that would be in it, what's the normal process of moving forward at that point? Let's say we authorize you to move forward and execute this contract, but something in it is something that we wouldn't have expected, we didn't expect to be in it because we haven't seen it yet. What do we usually do at that point?
If it's a significant departure from what we've contractually provided before or from what we've discussed with you all in the budget process, then certainly we'll bring it back to council. We're not anticipating that.
Okay, good. And last thing, I was looking at one of the features that I think we're adding to, which is seamless virtual meetings and collaboration, and part of the agenda bill said that this, these capabilities became crucial during the pandemic when in-person meetings were limited, and by leveraging Office 365, the city can continue to conduct virtual meetings regardless of physical distance. Does this mean we're going to be doing this? Is this just for staff or is this council and boards? What does that use for?
It will be for staff, so currently we have several software out there that we use for virtual meetings. And so we've brought in this under the Microsoft umbrella, using a tool that's under the Microsoft umbrella, it would allow us to discontinue the use of those and cancel those subscriptions and just use one platform to do all that. But it will be more in regards to meetings with staff and vendors, but not for public meetings.
Okay, does it have the capability for public meetings?
Not from a public meeting standpoint of the council body because of the nature of some other recording necessities and some other things, but certainly something we can look at.
What does that mean?
Well, there are some specific requirements within state law that I don't know that this piece of software is looking at doing. There's some other requirements for that. That's certainly we can, something we can discuss offline. Primarily, this tool is anticipated to be utilized and supplant the other software utilization that we're using for online meetings for staff.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I had to confirm.
You have a question, council?
All right, are you ready to make a motion for that, Roman?
I just had questions. Thank you.
All right. Would you like to make a motion?
No, that's okay.
I move that we adopt consent agenda item 4B of the renewable Microsoft software subscription, the amount of 110,279.
Second, we have a second?
48 cents.
All in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right.
We come to 5A, and this one is connected with the AC Schreiner House renovation. Michael?
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you all for taking the time today. Yeah, I didn't even think about this. I'd like to make fun of EA for a little while, but we'll just get to business. Martin, can you pull up that PowerPoint? So we are here to talk about AC Schreiner House, and we wanted to give you an update on where we are at with the design build process, and we've been working with Marksmen for quite a while, and they've given us quite a bit to digest, and so I'll just run through kind of the history of it all real quick. And, all right, Martin, I'm seeing nothing on my screen here. There it is. So just to reiterate, there are several areas within Kerrville 2050 that point to, specifically to the historic, to the Heritage Center and to the AC Schreiner House, and so as a part of that, this has been an ongoing project going back to 2015, but certainly post Kerrville 2050, I think that was accelerated. So just to kind of clarify the funding mechanisms that we have thus far, there's been $4 million that's been raised through donations, very generous donations through the HEB Foundation, HEB Foundation, HEB Corporate and HEB Foundation. I'm going to get that right one day, I promise you. I'll have to be a local for much longer to get some of this stuff right, but I'm going to get that one right. The Library Memorial Fund donated $2 million, and the Kerrville Hot Funds are going to be putting $1 million towards that as well. The second piece of the funding came through the HHHC Board, and that came out to $1 million. Again, very generous donations from Peterson Foundation, Stevens Foundation, Calhoun Foundation, Community Foundation, the Meadows Foundation, and also the Friends of the Library. So the total in all that we have is $5 million. So back when we envisioned this and before it went out to bid, there were $3.6 million that were going to go towards the construction of the building, $400,000 to remain in capital reserve for the city's maintenance of the building, and $1 million to go towards FF&amp;E fixtures, furniture and equipment for the project. So when we let that project out to, to bid, that was for $3.25 million, which sounds confusing because it says 3.6, not 3.25, but what we wanted to do was keep in reserve 10% of that for contingencies, and so that way we had some buffer space to go along with this. So just the quick history, I know we've all done this before, but just for everybody in the room, 2015, the building was acquired. 2019 through 2020, public funds were completed. 2021, we executed the management agreement with HHHC and had a few amendments kind of interspersed in there. In May of last year, city council authorized Friesen Nichols to be the representative. June, we started getting our statements of qualifications for the firms that could come in and help us with this, and then put those RFQs out, and then we got requests for proposals. So it's a really long process, but who's qualified to do the business first, whittle that list down, and then get those folks to submit proposals of here now we're actually going to try and do this work. So we received the RFPs in November, awarded it in December of '22. January, Angela Kennedy over here, who is the director of HHHC, held a community summit that was very well-attended and put together a very robust report. And then in February of 2023, we got to our first contract out of that $3.25 million to begin with schematic design and really kind of to look under the hood of the building and start giving design schematic examples, take a ton of questions from city staff, from HHHC members, and really kind of just get a rougher estimate. There's no construction documents yet. This is really just visioning for both HHHC, for city staff, and that's kind of the space that we're at. So as we went through that process, we got a call from Marksmen, and they said, hey, we'd like to meet. We've really taken a look at all these, all these options, and we said, they said, you know, this looks like preliminarily, this might be a little bit more than what you have planned out for the full renovation of this building. But not to come back with just news like that, they said, we have, right now it looks like we have three options that really, really are viable. Option A you see right there is the full renovation of the space. That number is $5.3 million, slightly higher than the $3.25 million we have allocated in the budget for the construction. Now, I say all this, and I want to say that these are not construction cost estimates. These are schematic design, they haven't taken a look under the hood of the building, they haven't kind of ripped little pieces, small pieces of it, out to see what the structural components of it entail. This is their blush at what this looks like. When staff looked at it, we thought, there's probably some areas of efficiency in here. We don't envision that there's $2 million worth of efficiencies in there, so there's still a gap, we think, between the $3.25 million we have allocated and the $5.3 million they show here. Option B, so option A, that was a full use of the assembly. That is, the entire building renovated and some, some work done on the grounds. Option B, which is still slightly over the budget, but not by much, it's $3.5 million. That's exterior renovation and the first floor renovation and fully sprinkled facility. So it would keep the fire marshal happy, we would have the entire building sprinkled, but that would be sealed off to the first floor only, and there would be exterior renovations that would be accomplished, but still not full use, just the first floor and the grounds are done up a bit. But that's a sealed first floor. No one, no one's allowed to go upstairs. Can't put anything upstairs, can't do anything upstairs. Fire marshal's got a key basically to the upstairs. Option C, this one was just exterior renovation and some grounds improvements, no interior work, and that was the budget that we have. Now, it's not really, those aren't the best of options to sit in front of us, so Marksmen understood that this would cause some concern, and before they proceeded to do all the remainder of that first phase of the work, they wanted to talk to us and get our sense of it. So the first thing we wanted to do was make sure we reached out to HHHC's board and had some discussions with them, and you know, this is a multi-partner process, and we knew that, we wanted to get a lot of buy-in from everybody, make sure that we're moving in the right direction, and get the, get the take from that board and see what they wanted to do. So we presented HHC members with that, those three options, and what came back was, well, it really doesn't work unless we have the full use of the, the full use of the area. So option A is really the option that works. And so what we want to do now is take that look under the hood. So we've spent about $30,000 thus far to get to this point. We have some real rough schematic drawings, but in order to get that, solidify a whole lot better the price tag for that full use, we really we really have to open up, open up the door, open up the walls a little bit, see if the structural load of that building can withstand that commercial use on the second and the third floor, and get the remainder of that work done, and get to thirty percent construction drawings. And that is gonna be the, using the remainder of that one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is the total contract that we have. So, we'd probably be using just about a hundred to a hundred and thirty of the remainder of that to get to that thirty percent and give us a real good look at what the structural components of the building currently are and what they would need to fully hold the weight of a commercial use on the second and the third floor. Let me see if I got any more in there. And I'll stop. If y'all have questions, right, just stop me at any time. Again, option A was the, the option that HHHC board would like to move forward with. And if you all are so inclined, we'd like to take a look and see what's under there. But we want to make sure that we have city councils buying before we spend that money.
So, really, what you're asking us for is use of the one hundred and seventy-five thousand?
You've already authorized us to move forward and go to this process, but now that we've, now that they've come back to us and said, you know, we're not sure that your budget's gonna be sufficient. And I think everybody knew that. To begin with, a lot of the RFPs came back and they had, you know, concerns about the budget. This is, this is their, again, it's not construction cost estimates. They do this for a living. They do it all the time. This is their guess at it. And I think that we, to get closer, and I say guess, let me rephrase that. They won't give us a true cost estimate until they can start getting down to those construction documents, right? This is, this is, again, it is, it is an educated guess without getting underneath the hood, so.
Do they, what's your feel on that it could be a lot more? Or have they?
Given an estimate of any kind of?
Yeah, something.
How much more it's actually gonna be?
So, if you'll, if you'll notice in there, that option A, I can go back to that. You know, that five point three million has some assumptions in there that the second and third floor framing can support the occupancy loads. So, provided that it can support those loads, that's their estimate on what that will be. If that can't support those loads, then we're talking about a different pricing. We're talking about structural beams being placed in, and so, they're reluctant to put those kind of costs in there. And then, what that five point three million dollars doesn't envision is the full renovation to the grounds, all on the exterior, so.
It's not the exterior of the house, it's just adding and enhancing the grounds?
That five point three million dollars is, is the ceiling of the house, the envelope to make it airtight, doing all the things that we had discussed for the interior of the building, but it does not accomplish the, some of the exterior portions, really doesn't accomplish any of the grounds, which is a significant portion and won't be without its own share of cost. I don't have a number that I can put out for that, but it's not considered in that five point three million dollars.
It's a full renovation of the interior and exterior of the building. It does not address the grounds or the carriage house.
Okay, okay. But that's something that would be done last anyway, probably.
It could be later phases?
Yes.
Yes.
It would allow the tenant to occupy the building and utilize the facility for the purposes that have been specified within the agreement.
Okay. And if you proceed with the thirty percent design phase, how long after that will we know whether or not we're gonna need more than that?
Uh, it gets us considerably closer, but I don't envision that that number goes down in, in a way that gets you to three point two five million dollars for the full use of the building. So, once we have that thirty percent number, we'll bring it right back to you.
Yeah, that's all I'm looking for, is what's the timeframe for getting that information?
I think it's gonna be about two months.
About two months, yeah.
All right. Do we have any speakers?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right. All right, Council, other questions and thoughts? I'm sure you have some.
I have some comments, of course.
Go ahead.
It will surprise no one in the room that this project is dear to my heart. Before I was elected, the city and the board of the Harthill's Heritage Center executed a memorandum of agreement. In essence, that agreement called for the city to renovate the old AC and Murta, his wife, Schreiner, they lived there together.
Thank you, sir.
Their house. Home into a safe building for public use, and the Heritage Center would develop, install, and administer a history museum within that building. Initially, the project had a five million dollar budget. The Heritage Center Board was tasked with raising one million dollars before the project could begin. Then, the COVID-19 pandemic hit. Almost immediately, all progress on the project stopped, but quiet project was still being made. The Heritage Center Board met its goal of raising one million dollars in October 2021, almost a year and a half ago. The wheels of government moved slowly. In December 2022, the City Council authorized the city's manager to negotiate a design build contract for the Harthill's Heritage Center. Now, in June 2023, this item is back on our agenda. As Ms. Barans has frequently pointed out, the combination of supply chain issues coupled with inflation has made almost every item the city purchases more expensive. And so, it is with this project. The delays caused by the pandemic, as well as the subsequent supply chain issues inflation, have caused this, the cost of this project to increase. What I hope, what one member of the Council hopes, is that the Council will direct staff to proceed with the project, directing them to seek additional funding from sources such as the Economic Improvement Corporation, funding from cost savings on certain parts of the project, and from other public and private sources. If we don't do this now, it will never get done. I'm hoping that we can work together to find a way to fund it.
Roman, comments?
Well, with the increased amount that you're proposing for us, where are you now proposing that the money's gonna come from?
I think, as Councilmember Herring discussed, there are various options, some of which are suggestions that would come from, from this body for us to go speak to.
But you're coming with us with a recommendation, so I want to know what has staff thought of, what has our contractor thought of, what have we done? What are you bringing to us right now?
Well, I think what I'm bringing to you is, is the reality of the situation we're in, which is, you know, inflation is, is causing things to be more expensive, and that before we spend the money to really delve under the hood and get a good firm cost, that we wanted to bring that back to you. We, my recommendation would be to, to get to those thirty percent construction documents and to have a structural engineer give us their opinion, which is all contained within that one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we have.
The hope is that it's gonna be a more precise estimate after that?
Yes, sir.
And you said we spent currently how much of the one seventy-five?
Thirty has already been spent.
So, that's all for now, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Jess?
Well, just to get to the thirty percent design phase, that's where they go in, they tear a little bit bigger holes, and they took a look with everything, correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
And then, if we find out then that we have more structural issues, that's when you come back to Council and say, hey, we got more problems. Or you come back to us and say, hey, it was better than what we thought.
I think I want to come back to you either way.
So, that's, I mean, we won't know until we get there, really.
That's right.
Brenda?
I'm just ready for a motion. I support what Joe has said. This has been going on, this has been talked about, and a lot, so much effort has been put into it by, by that board. They've done a marvelous job. They've got an executive director who's ready to do more than she's doing right now, and, and I just think that, I agree with what Joe said. If we don't do this now, I don't think it'll ever get done. And the longer we wait, the more costs are going to go up. And I think that we have, I think we have an obligation to, to this board and to the agreement that we made, and, and to ourselves, to the community. I think we have an obligation to, to move forward and go with Plan A.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
If we move forward right now, we're not directing you to move forward on either one of those options.
No, you're not. Well, what you're directing us to do would be to move forward to the thirty percent design and, and what, at the full, the full build-out. So, they would be.
Would that have already happened without our approval?
It could have already happened had they come back to us with a number that met budget. And I, I would, we would have all felt comfortable just moving forward, but knowing this, we wanted to come back and, and get the sentiment of the Council.
May I make one more comment?
Yes.
The staff has done an excellent job working on this project, as have the staff of the, of the museum board and the officers of that board. It's a complicated thing, you know? It's a 1908 house, roughly, and we're trying to make it where it's, the, it's cool in the summer and warm in the winter. It doesn't have air conditioning.
The ADA compliance issues.
And there's no ADA compliance. And it's my opinion, and it's just my opinion, that this would be a jewel for our community. But getting there's gonna be hard to figure out. I've, I've spent a lot of time this last week in thinking, is my love for this project so strong that I can't see the hill we have to climb? But I think the hill is gonna be worth climbing.
I agree with you. I totally agree. All right, Council, we have a decision? Do we have a motion? I'll move.
Go ahead, please.
That we direct the city manager to contractually proceed with the thirty percent design phase and the structural assessment of the AC Schreiner House. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Please raise your right. Do you have more?
Can I ask why we have to authorize you all to move forward if this is something that's already in the contract?
Not authorizing me to move forward, you're recommending, you're directing me to continue to proceed. So, I already have the authorization, but obviously, given the data that we have now, we wanted to inform the Council and confirm direction in, in moving forward.
I think that's wise to do. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just asking if.
Yeah, it's not a contractual, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimously approved. All right. Thank you, Council.
So, we will have them working on this by now.
If we can start getting some fundraising going and figure out what our other options are now, that'd be great, so we're not delaying that anymore, any further.
We will, we will, we will start working on that net as well. Thank you.
And thank you again, Board. We appreciate all your past work. All right. Five B. Please, do you want to read us in, Shelley?
Order of the City Council Agenda. And we do have eight speakers signed up.
All right. All right. I think we can go ahead with the eight speakers then.
Jacqueline Hall. She left. Shelley, she left. She left? Okay. Gail Wright?
My name is Gail Wright. I live here in the city. The city of Curville prides itself as being transparent. The city often tells anyone that will listen that the city council is here to serve the citizens, which is correct. You were elected to represent us. However, this agenda item to move the visitor forum to the end of each council meeting says the exact opposite. It shows that the Council does not care about the citizens of this town and that you would rather not hear what we have to say. And to cut down on the amount of time we have to speak further emphasizes that fact. Actually, you hope that putting the visitor forum to the end of the council meeting will discourage people from speaking and encourage the people at these meetings to leave without hearing what we have to say. If you want us to wag more and bark less, don't try and muzzle us.
Bethany Puccio?
Bethany Puccio, 418 Crest Ridge Drive, right here in Curville. The banner out there says, "Your Voice, Your City." And what the citizens often feel, or at least some citizens feel, is that there's a lot of contempt toward us when we do come in and use our voice. And attempting to move the forum to the end, we've already seen this before, when agenda items were brought forth that were important to citizens, you would tack it on the end and it'd be nine-thirty, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, wearing people down to, and also, you're worn down at that point. You're not fresh. So, it's kind of like saying that the stuff we want to talk about really isn't that important. And I would just ask you not to do it. Keep it at the beginning. There are people, even tonight, they, they took time out of their day, they had appointments. Jacqueline Hall is one of them. She had to leave for her job, but she took the time at six o'clock to come because she could with the visitors forum and still have an opportunity to address you, her elected officials, on business that's important. And I would like to see more citizens become involved with city council and with city business, not less. And I see it going the opposite direction if you were to move the forum. Thank you.
Hi, Nikki Keynes. I live in the city. I'm just saying that I agree with the previous speakers. Moving it to the end, or actually, any other time within the, within the agenda, does tend to disenfranchise the voters. As far as I know, there's only been one town hall here where the voters could come and talk about, like, any specific subject. So, to move it to the end would, like Bethany said, tell us that we, we really don't have time for you, but just get it done and get it over with. We don't have a Facebook conversation still. I, I guess it was before my time, there was a Facebook, the city, where voters could make a conversation with their leaders. That does not happen, and, and I guess it's not going to happen anymore. As far as limiting our time, I see we're still at four minutes for this. Thank you very much. But if it does get to the point where it's a crunch time, if you do end up limiting, how will you limit speakers? Are you gonna do a pro and a con thing, like, there will be equal number of speakers? I just ask you to please leave it to where it is. We do feel honored to be able to come in. This is really our only way to engage with you on a particular subject that isn't on the agenda. And it's really important because we really have no other way of doing it, where we could do it with an email or a phone call, but it's not public. And I think what someone else has to say, someone who's watching online or sitting out in the foyer, might be something that they hadn't thought about before, and they need to know it. So, I thank you.
Thank you.
Peggy McKay, Curville. A lot of what Nikki said is what I'd been thinking. Why do citizens regularly come to council? Why are we here every council meeting? We don't always address you, but we care. It's an opportunity to share with council and the citizens who might be here or watching on stream. And it gives us a chance to be aware of others' views and also the city business. In the staff summary, it begins saying the city council is a business meeting. Placement of the visitors forum will give them the opportunity to be more productive and cohesive in the business meeting. No detail as to how that would happen, why that was arrived at, so I can't address that. But the awards and the certificates also appear before the business meeting. There's no mention of that being moved. And up to tonight, they have taken considerably more time. And up to tonight, they have taken considerably more time, in some instances, up to forty minutes before the business meeting started. The staff's own research of ten cities shows that eight have their visitors forum, forum prior to the meeting, and two at the end. This came up several years ago, and I checked on forty, twenty-four cities, twenty of which had theirs at the beginning. And again, the citizens have been perceived by some who have opposing views to be negative, disruptive, and against everything. This apparently because they express opposing views and opinions, this is an undeserved accusation. In every city budget I've seen, there's a organizational chart. There's the staff, the city council, and at the top is the citizens. And if this passes, to me, it looks like the citizen is being diminished and taken away from that spot. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Lily Beard.
I agree with a lot of what's been said. I feel like sometimes when I've been here and something that a large portion of us wanted to speak on was put in the very bottom, nine, ten o'clock. You have a lot of your older people that come to the city council meetings because they do want to express what they think about a particular subject, whether it be the library, whether it be anything. And they don't see you well to drive at night. They aren't able to sit here for that long to be able to give their opinions. And to me, that's just diminishing what the citizens are trying to get across to our council and trying to provide you with our thoughts and things on different issues. And I know the mayor's probably surprised that I'm not speaking about the library tonight, but I thought this, in my opinion for myself, was more important that you guys keep this where it's at, so that you can listen to your citizens and hear what they've got to say, and you can take your notes and you can discuss it at a later time in a closed session or whatever, about how the majority of your citizens are feeling about the different issues, or bringing up issues to you that needs to be looked at. And please, don't put this at the end and make your citizens feel like that we're not counted at all in this, and this is what you're called, is the city council, which is for the citizens. And for you to be able to hear your citizens, and if you put it at the end, you're going to do away with that and you're going to lose a lot of your citizens that take pride in being able to come and speak to their city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Wolf.
Good evening, I'm Jerry Wolf. I see that new life has been brought to an issue that was first brought up by Mary Ellen Summerlin some six years ago, when she served on city council. Ms. Summerlin, by the way, was appointed to council, not elected. She raised a supposedly same concern that's been talked about, about why these changes need to be made about meeting efficiency. She went so far as to calling those who spoke through the visitors forum as riffraff. And I have to remember that because I'm, because I was part of that riffraff group. Maybe I still am today, perhaps. Council then voted three to one to approve the visitors forum to end, to, voted to approve the, the motion. The only person not voting on the issue was surprisingly Mrs. Summerlin, the advocate for the change, who was absent the night the vote was taken. About six months later, the new council wisely moved the forum back to the beginning of the meeting. In fact, one of the newly elected council members, Vic Vocal, Vince Vocal, had this issue as part of his campaign platform. Moving the visitors forum was wrong then and is wrong now. The discussion of this agenda item that took place six years ago was during the one hundred eighty-first commemoration of the siege of the Alamo. Funny coincidence, this issue was brought up several months ago, I believe, in this council, in February, during the same historical time period. As you know, a hundred and eighty or so heroes just seventy miles from here made a brave stand to fight for the liberty and freedom of all future Texans. I think our proximity to San Antonio makes us Hill Country Texans more aware of the need to protect our freedom of speech and have a voice in our governments. Moving the forum to the end of the city council meeting discourages city participa, citizens' participation and thereby, thereby diminishes our voices. Encourage your fellow citizens of Kerrville and Kerr County to keep freedom alive and remember the Alamo, as demonstrated tonight. Put the visitors forum at the end of the meeting, a lot fewer people would have voiced their opinion this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Perudy.
George Perudy, sixteen sixteen Glen Road. I, I think the main thing is, if we were starting a new city and we were having this discussion, it would be justified, the arguments that are being made, to have it at the end. But what we're actually trying to justify is a movement of it from a prominent spot in the beginning to the end. And the reasons being given really sound like everybody said, and I'm sorry, Mayor, but you were the one who suggested this in February, and it's posted as yours, so it, it basically makes it look like you, in particular, see the citizens as in the way because they're part of the inefficiencies of the meeting, and they're an afterthought, so possibly move them to the end. And we've already seen you censor people, no applause, don't bring pictures. I even watched you tell somebody, "I'm sorry, we've, we've heard enough from you already, we'd like you to leave." And the person hadn't even begun to speak. So if the idea is to move us to the end because you're trying to disengage from the public or lessen the engagement, that's a mistake. If you've got some justified reason, I haven't seen it. And as far as the, the reasoning, like, today, you did exactly the way you should do it, okay? You already have the authority, Mr. Garcia's points aside, you could change something if that was a problem. But you have a big number of people, you, you drop the minutes for everybody, and you get through it and everything's fine. You don't have a problem with it. Everybody comes in. If you had a hundred people come in, you can drop it to a minute. I've gone to the legislature in the state, and that's exactly how they do it. They just drop the time. But you don't have to set the time low unless you have a problem. And most meetings are not a problem. People come in and they, there's a couple of people at visitors forum speak and they go. I don't see that as a problem. But at each, at each juncture, if we're, we, what is it, six years ago, we added meetings, we keep minimizing the interaction with the citizens. Yes, they can email you all, but that's a lot different than speaking here in the public square. Because even if you can't talk to us at the visitors forum, the public sees the speech and they can talk about it, you all can talk about it, and it creates that conversation. Sending you an email, nobody knows that email went to you. And so you don't have to respond to it, nothing has to happen. So I would urge you not to move it. If you want to consider dropping the minutes when there's a number of people, so be it. Somewhere in the agenda bill, it talks about limiting the number of people. I'm sorry, but I think you can verify this, but if you have a public forum on there, anybody that wants to speak on that item has to be allowed to speak. So you shouldn't even consider limiting the number of people that speak. You can limit their time. As far as people that come up and speak rudely, you already have that ability. Decor them, you can, you can shut them down and send them home. So I don't see the need for a change. I haven't heard any real good justification for a change. I would urge you just leave it alone. One last point, it is a little bit curious that you brought this up as a possible one in February and waited till after an election to bring it up. I suspect it's because people know that it would have been an election issue, and it would have been difficult to have that happen without that. So it got moved to after the election, but I don't know that for sure. Thanks.
Here.
All right. All right. One of the reasons that I had brought this up, this is a business meeting, and yes, people don't like to stay late. However, for council, sometimes it gets very late for us. And, but I am, what I would like to do is, I would like not to move it, council, just so that you know, I would like to leave it where it is. I would like to limit the minutes to two minutes. And the purpose for doing that now or ahead of time would simply be for people to know we just have two minutes to talk. So tonight, they were very, very good. Everybody reduced their minutes and, and did that nicely, and I appreciate that. I think it would be nice if they knew coming in, "I only have two minutes," and they are then, they, they make their remarks skip two minutes. So that is what I would, I would propose. If you would like to talk about it before I make that motion, we can do that.
Well, the item that's before us, the subject is the placement of the visitor's citizens forum within the order of the city council agenda.
And I want to leave it.
This, I know. The subject of this agenda item is not determine the amount of time that speakers have. We have to be very careful when we're going beyond the scope of what the subject of the item is. Respectfully, I don't think we can take action on anything else on this item besides where the placement of visitors forum is going to be.
Okay. And I guess probably, Roman, I would have to agree with you there. So under those circumstances?
I think we can discuss the visitors forum. I, for the most part, I enjoy the visitors forum, even when I don't agree with the person. I learn stuff during the visitors forum, and I, I'm happy that you want to keep it at the beginning of the meeting. I do think we ought to give you some, the, the mayor, whoever is presiding over the meeting, some leeway about setting the time limit. Today, you requested that it be two minutes. There was objection, but I think everybody participated and respected that, only because there were just so many, that there were all four minutes, anyway. The math was just a long time. Perhaps if we bring this agenda back, item back, we have some easy mechanism where the chair, the mayor can say, because of the number of people signed up, tonight, we're going to limit. Every night, having two minutes all the time would be fine for me because it'd be more concise, but I actually enjoy the visitors forum. I think it's an interesting part of the meeting, my two cents.
I've spoken as a civilian, both, and we went from an hour and thirty-two minute possible visitors forum to forty-six minutes. That is more reasonable. You've said it clear, this is a business meeting. We are, and I understand that y'all, and I understand what y'all are saying, and y'all have every right to come in here and speak. You do, and we want to hear it. But we run a business. This is what this is, like any other board. George, I know you're on boards, and I know you've been on boards, but we run a business meeting. You know, if you can't run a business meeting, so we started at six o'clock, we were done with visitors forum at six fifty-six approximately. So we could have been here till almost eight o'clock at four minutes. I'm not saying that it's not important. You absolutely have every right to come in here and talk to us. If you want more time, get on the agenda. That's what the agenda items are for. And then present it to us. Mike, I don't believe there's anything that says you have five minutes, or three minutes, or two minutes, or we have to put you on video and broadcast you. Is that correct? Or that we even have to have a visitors forum?
Correct.
So we're doing it because we do want to hear what is said by our citizens, because we do represent y'all, we are elected officials, and thank y'all for putting us all here in this position. But I am fully in agreeance, Mayor, of you having the authority to set the time, however you need to do it.
Yeah.
Well, I also, it doesn't really matter whether it's at the beginning or at the end, it's, it's the content that I would like for us to be sensitive about, because we are livestreamed, and a lot of people watch us at home. So what happened that night with the book reading in here, all the children that want, that, that they want to protect were exposed to that reading that night. So I would just like to see us be a little bit more professional in our conversations with each other, whether it's, it's broadcast live, or whether it's person to person, or whether it's email. And, and that's, that's really the extent of, of my opinion on this matter.
Okay. All right.
Were you going to say something?
Something else?
I was going to make my comments.
Oh.
Unless you had something.
Well, I, go ahead. I thought you were getting it.
Oh, no, I was just objecting to the time, place, the time restriction. Everybody knows I'm in full support of having the visitors forum at the beginning of the agenda. In fact, I think I would like council to consider putting it above the, what is it, announcements or presentations? I went back to twenty, two thousand and ten, I think, and for a while there, up until, mm, I can't be precise, I have, have it on my laptop, I don't want to waste time to do that. It was actually call to order, invocation and pledge, and then visitors forum for a while. And that put the citizens right on top, they got to speak their mind, we got to listen to them, and then if they wanted to stay about something else, they could. I am very hesitant, following up on what council member Hughes said, about censoring and restricting content based speech. We were just talking about freedom of speech here.
I'm asking-
And so I'm just wanting to make sure that we don't start limiting or restricting the content.
That's not what I said.
We have gone from where we are, where we've been, keeping that at the very front. Speakers have been stopped from speaking at our meetings. We've had Facebook comments where people can have an open dialogue in a public forum, and then we took that away from them. Nobody can comment on our Facebook pages anymore. We are talking about limiting time. My predecessor, Gary Cochran, was all in favor of keeping it to four minutes, because he said, people come in, they're prepared to speak because they know the normal procedure. Some people are nervous speaking on city councils, is what he said. Speaking to city council, and so they want time to make sure they feel prepared. I think we got to be respectful of that as well. We've gone from that. Citizen requested items are at the end of the agenda. We know this, citizen seating is limited and is now divided. We've done this before. Citizens knew about where we're going to place the visitors forum, and I think the council at the time rightfully put it back to the top, so I'm glad we're hopefully all in agreement that that's where we're going to keep it. The thing I just keep hearing, though, is that this is a business meeting. This is a business meeting. The question is, whose business are we deliberating? The public's business. So why are we getting them at the end? They should be at the forefront of every decision we make, and for that reason, that's why I always believe that they got to be at the forefront of the agenda. And we don't start, as we've already done, as the examples I just gave, now start limiting it even more. That does not, to me, demonstrate that we are prioritizing our community and valuing their input. I think in our rules, when it talks about speakers coming up and speaking, it says we encourage it, and they're highly valued. Well, I don't think the citizens are going to start feeling that way if we're going to start going down this path of restrictions and limiting. So that's all I got to say. I'm glad we're going to keep it at the forefront, and I would ask that we actually place it immediately after the invocation and pledge for council to consider that.
Okay, under the circumstances, I don't believe that we need to have a motion. I believe that we can leave it as it is. And is anyone in disagreement with that? Then we do not need a motion.
With what I just said, or with?
Well, I don't, I no longer have a motion.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right. Anyone in disagreement?
What is telling me to think about moving it? Right up, getting it immediately after the invocation and pledge.
I think if you want to do that, you need to bring it up as a motion.
Okay, that's fine. I may have to place the visitor citizens forum immediately after the invocation and pledge. That way, we can at least talk about it. I want to hear y'all's thoughts, I don't want to just sit up here and speak in the nobody talks.
Do we have a second to that motion? It fails or lack a, a second, no. Okay. All right. We will move on to five C.
City electioneering rules and policies, chapter seven, D, article three, electioneering at polling locations, city code of ordinances.
Yes, I, I requested that this be placed on the agenda, and at the time, one more member of council, council member Clarkson, supported that with me, and she is no longer on council. So, I asked Jeff if he would help support this with me, and basically, I'm just asking that we look at the rules and line them the same as the county rules. And I just think it makes for a more fair system of electioneering. And so, I had, I have written out some thirteen items here for you to consider, and I'm open to discussion.
And I'm sorry, we do have three citizen speakers signed up.
Okay. All right. Counsel, are we okay to go ahead with citizen speakers at this point?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Barbara Ferguson?
Barbara Dill Ferguson. I live here in Kerrville. Having just been through this process, I was interested when I saw it on the agenda. Nobody knows better than a candidate what's involved in the electioneering laws and what's involved when you're actually there all day long for two weeks, you know, from before sunup to sundown. But it is a grueling process, and I think a lot of the things that may come up as suggestions for changes, I understand, you know, where the thought process may be there to make things a little simpler. As you mentioned, Councilwoman Hughes, a little fairer. But I have a concern that when we start making ground rules that try to level the playing field, we're taking away the freedom of speech of a candidate and their supporters, and the work they do, and they're willing to put in to get a message across. And it may seem ridiculous to watch us all out there scrambling around at seven thirty in the morning, putting signs out. And if any of the community had come by, I mean, you'd all sit there and laugh. I know you would. We do it ourselves while we scramble around to put our signs out. But there's a message that's given off when we do that. There's a message for what we're willing to put forward, how much we value the possibility that we can represent the citizens. And if there's any intent here in saying, we're going to limit every candidate to X number of signs. We're going to limit, and we want the tents for the candidates moved further away from the people, then we're infringing on that freedom of speech that we're given, that is especially protected when it comes to campaigns. And so, I would encourage you to be very, very careful as you look at this, and it's not a bad thing to make candidates work, and thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Nikki Keynes again. I live in the city. Councilman Hughes, you said something about making the, the county and the city the same. But I looked up the commissioner's court, court order thirty-nine, two oh one, and it very, it differs very much from what I saw in one of your recommendations. The county says, no one may post political signs, da, 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 and for thirty minutes before and after the voting period begins. They may not post signs. Yours goes a whole lot further in stating, a candidate or representative should not, should arrive, should arrive no more than thirty minutes before, after, and as Ms. Ferguson was saying, you know, it's a competition, and it's a campaign. And if you get there earlier, you know, the early worm gets the bird. There was another one, again with the county. It says, no more than six signs per can, per candidate may be placed or erected, and political signs that are personally held will not count towards the maximum. Your recommendation says, no more than ten signs per candidate may be placed, held, or erected. But then the following statement says, and no more than four signs per candidate may be carried. So, to me, I'm, I'm scratching my head going, are we talking a total of ten? Are we talking fourteen? You know, if we want to, if we do essentially want to match them up and make it a little bit easier to understand. And my last question, and forgive me, because, you know, we have so many entities in here. We've got municipal, we've got county, we've got state, we've got federal. The city contracts with the county for municipal election. But if it's a county, or a state, or a federal election, are these same rules, are you intending that these same rules, if they're passed, be applied to every single election? I'm just saying, because my brain was like, well, this is a city council, and you're putting out city rules.
This is on city property.
Well, it's not on city property. It's on property that is, like, the Calu is not, if it's, is the Calu owned by the city?
Yes.
Okay, so the city then, because you choose where the polling happens, you get to set the rules as far as the placement or the number of signs? Is that what it is? Okay. All right. Let me think. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Broody?
George Broody, six and sixteen, Glen Road. So, first thing is a question. I was a little confused. So, in the agenda packet, we showed a list of, I guess it was current rules. Those are city rules currently, right? What's in the packet?
The ordinance.
Yeah, that's, that's a city ordinance, right?
That's existing.
Okay. And so, I was a little confused when I saw them, because most of these suggested items, I think, are just repeating what's already in there, so I'm not sure if you're only editing a couple of them, or suggesting two. But, but the ones that you are, that I could identify as being changes, was number two, was the sign count. Number seven was, I wrote down, oh, because there's a, there's a portion of sign count in there. And number eight, I feel like that one's already done. I mean, like, you can't damage property regardless of what you're doing there. So, I mean, thinking that's kind of, like, implicitly in there. Yeah, so you've only got two that I could tell. Well, no, there's, the thing about number nine, it's different, but, oh, yeah, it's prohibiting attaching to trees or something like that. That, that seems like a reasonable addition. If people didn't know it, they shouldn't attach it to a tree, or a fence, or a building, or something like that. Although other ones that are already done, I, I don't see, I mean, there's nothing to do there. The ones that are counting signs, while maybe reasonable, they're, they're getting close to, as I think Ms. Ferguson, censorship aspect, especially carrying. Because I think state law prohibits you from regulating electioneering outside the hundred, except for some reasonable thing. And I think carrying something is kind of unreasonable, because I should be able to identify that I'm for whoever it is I'm for when I'm walking around. When you're trying to count the signs, I will say that it was like a sign explosion this year. I'd never seen it as many as that. So, I, I don't totally disagree with that. I think we're bordering on something, but when you pick the number, you get a little bit close to censoring. And another thing that happens there, I think somebody was alluding to it, if it's a city, if the polling place is a city, is this city, and we're holding our city elections there, it's almost like insider trading when we make rules about it, because we could have the election somewhere else and not have these rules applied. So, there's a special sort of censorship that happens there. It sort of happened, I guess, I wasn't around for it, with that one parking spot that isn't owned by anybody but the city, and somehow, it was a problem. So, anyways, I'm not totally against these things, except if they're going to add to something. If these are redundantly added, I think that doesn't make a lot of sense. And the tent thing, I'd be okay with just saying tents aren't allowed. I mean, setting up a structure at a polling place seems like a reasonable, I mean, an unreasonable allowance. If I want to park my car, the one that brought me here, and use that as my home base, I think that's reasonable. But allowing them to have a tent, I, I wouldn't even, I might even consider just taking the tents out. And maybe prohibiting loitering cars, you know, like someone just parking a car that didn't bring them there, and just using it as a prop. That's arguably already handled by loitering and not being allowed. So, I, I'm just saying, it seems like some things that maybe, you know, it's, it's extra regulation that's already kind of handled, for the most part. And, you know, anyways, like the things about sidewalks, like, you already can't do that. Anyways, thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, counsel, we have some questions probably that need to be asked.
I will say that our ordinance right now, twenty fourteen dash oh two, it defines the polling place as a city-owned or controlled public property that is being used as an election polling place.
Thank you. All right. Brenda, do you have anything else you want to say at this point? No. Jeff, we'll start down there with you.
Well, I'll mirror what Barbara said a while ago. We were there, and I felt like a six-year-old hunting Easter eggs. It was ridiculous. Signs don't win elections. It's, you know, it's, it's really not. People know who you are. They see your signs throughout town. You know, they do their research. And, you know, I am one hundred percent for doing something different. It's just, you know, before I ran for city council, and I'd go vote, I absolutely hated voting. I hate to walk the gauntlet, as I called it, because you get bombarded, or you're like, oh, my God. Or I'll go park somewhere else, and I'll try to walk in from a different direction, so I don't have to see it. But it's, you know, I, I think the number of signs that we had out there was just crazy.
Well, you know, and, and the intimidation, you know, people feeling intimidated may, may stop them from voting at all. And, you know, we already have a low voter turnout rate, and this could be part of the reason why.
You know, as far as tents, George, thank you for saying what you did, because, you know, but that's, if you're going to be out there all day, you need some kind of cover, you know, because it is hot. You're out there, you know, Barbara, you're there every day. I have a job, so I wasn't there every day. But I thought about you a little bit when I was sitting in the air conditioning. But, you know, you need something. Now, as far as where the candidates go, where you sit, what you do, where you drink your water, I think you should be back on the back on Jefferson Street, honestly. I wouldn't mind being back there, and if somebody wanted to come talk to me about, hey, what are your beliefs? What are you running for? Then they're going to come back there, they're going to seek you out. You know, it doesn't have to be right there in the very front. It doesn't have to be, you know, and we all were, you know. Barbara, you were there. Lang was there. Roman, you were there. Brandon was there. I was kind of there. But, you know, it was, but if somebody wants to talk to you, if they want to come support you, they'll come seek you out. You should already have your mind made up, what you're going to do, and who you're thinking about voting for before you get there. So, I am in total agreeance with a change to this, Brenda, and limiting the number of signs where the candidates are staged at, and let the voters just go vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Roman, go ahead.
Can I make a suggestion that we go through the ones that are different? And that way, we can have a deliberation on that, and then say yes or no, whether we're going to do that, and just go down the line like you used to do.
I was going to do that, but let's just comment first before we do that.
Sure, okay. Okay, sure. Then I'll make my comments brief. Questions that I'm going to have on several of these are, how are these going to be policed, one? You know, who's going to be counting the signs, and if someone happens to bring a, a sign and just put it there, now it's eleven, and then the person comes and whoever's supposed to be policing it, and then they take it out, and now it's ten. I mean, I, I'm really curious how this is actually going to play out. One thing I want to know is, is this going to apply to all of our other elections, or just the ones where we have city council elections? Let's see, something that I'm not going to talk on already. I would say, though, Jeff, because I was there every single day, Councilmember Harris, because I was there every single day. People would, people would go around and say, hmm, well, I see your sign. Let me talk to you. Okay, I guess I'll vote for you. So, the thing that signs don't win elections, I think there are even studies that are shown, whether you have them around town or at a polling place, it does have an impact on the voters. You know, if they don't see any signs from one camp, let's just say I had no signs there, and my opponent had all of his or her signs out. When they go to vote, if they never saw my name once, they are probably most likely, and this is from a study, they're probably most likely not going to vote for me because they saw the other person's signs, especially if they don't even know me. So, there's that. Everything else, if we go through the new regulations that are in, I'll hit some points on those. Jeff, thank you.
Joe?
So, this, May twenty-two was my third campaign for city council. And had I the ability to time travel from nineteen ninety to twenty twenty-two to the parking lot at the municipal auditorium, what we used to call municipal auditorium, I would have been shocked. In nineteen ninety, you wouldn't have had signs out there. There were no signs out there. That you would have been, it would have been considered tacky to have tents and signs and, and a gauntlet to have to run through. You would, you would have lost votes by having signs out there. I respect that people want to have, want to have a presence at the polls. I do wish that we would prioritize the voters. In other words, the, the parking places closest to the doors are all crowded with tents and signs. When I ran, at the same time Mayor ran and Councilmember Hughes ran, I went out in the mornings, I put up my signs, and then I went to make a job. And I came on, I, after work, I came and helped pick up all the signs. And y'all look worn out at the end of every day, and, and I felt bad that I wasn't there, but it hasn't always been this way. I know it was thirty years ago. Times are different. But goodness gracious, if I had time traveled to look at what's going on, it, it looks like a, a little bit of a carnival at that parking lot. And I think we should prioritize the voters that have access to parking close to the doors. I don't want to limit who can be there, and I think we ought to have tents, only because it's blistering hot some days. But whenever I vote, I actually go and vote, I actually go talk to everybody that'll talk to me, who's out there campaigning. And I, I thank them for running. I do, because it's a, it's a deal. But it's insane to sit out there for two weeks, in my opinion. That's all I really have to say.
Thank you, thank you. Well, I think personally, it's gotten out of hand. I have to agree with, with Jeff. That was just, we'd never seen anything like the last election, and, I mean, there wasn't a spot that didn't have a sign in it. And, and Jeff, I would agree with you. I think the tents and the candidate should be on Jefferson Street. They should be as far away from that door as possible, and so that you don't wa, you don't drive in by them. Now, you can still drive in off of Jefferson Street, of course, but the main, main entrance is really off of, of Main Street there. So, so, let's, let's go through, and.
I'm, I'm at a disadvantage. I don't have, I don't have Brenda's fourteen points, or.
Oh.
For some reason, they weren't, they, and I can't act scraticus right now, and.
Here, you can have those. Now, we're, we're right, that's it. Okay.
There are more than this, though. There's two pages.
Well, we'll get, we'll get it to you when we get there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so number one, no one may post political signs or literature on city of curvy-owned or controlled property being used as a polling place at any time other than during the voting period of a particular election as defined in section such and such of the Texas Election Code, and for 30 minutes before and after the voting period ends, this includes laying signs out on the property. Changes or agreed?
Is that currently what we do?
Except for the laying down, that has been, we have been able to lay down. Well, I don't know if we have been. It has been done.
I know that this last time, we all, at 6:30, we were running around, stamping signs. We didn't have, now what we would do was we, at 6:30, we would lay them where we wanted to put them. But there was nothing beforehand, so that's...
Right. Yeah, like before, people would go around like whenever they got there, just to make sure they got the spot they wanted for their signs, they'd go place them down. This is my third election, too, I think. They'd go place them down, and then when it got time to where we could actually have them up, then they'd go and stick them in the ground. And so there's never been a rule that we couldn't lay them down. For some reason, there was a made-up rule this year that we couldn't do that. But that's one that, that's how they used to do it.
One thing that may change, if we limit signs, then the laying down doesn't become as, quite as significant. Okay, do we change anything right now? Do you put a question mark beside it? Leave it, okay? All right, number two, no more than 10 signs per candidate may be placed, held, or erected on the controlled property being used as a polling place. This includes all signs, such as banners, ground signs, handheld signs, magnetic signs, billboard-type signs, posters, et cetera.
First question I have is what is et cetera? Because that's very broad. I think what we're gonna, if we're gonna, you know, gonna make a regulation, we gotta make it specific. Because all this is gonna be turned into an ordinance, I believe, right? It's gonna amend our existing one.
Yes.
So...
Yeah, we could take out the et cetera and put a period after posters, is what I would suggest we do.
I think that would probably be the wise, there shouldn't be much more than that, is there? That somebody could try to get away with.
Groundhouse sign. So then, here's where we're, where I'm gonna raise the handheld signs issue that a citizen also brought up. Because number seven refers to how many signs can be carried.
Yes.
And here it says no more than 10 signs, and it includes handheld signs. So I'm trying to understand what is the difference. I also, I just don't agree with the number 10. What I would instead suggest is maybe, let's say, rather than saying how many you can have up, say where you can put them up. You know, for example, would be if you want to put them up along the, that, what used to be grass-rock area along the streets, you know, regularly, where you can put them up rather than how many? Because I don't know how that's gonna, who's gonna police that? Who's gonna track how many are there?
Well, we've had plenty of policing. There's no shortage of policing that goes on, but I'm inclined to...
Can you explain that? Because I don't know how that's gonna work.
At the 10 signs. I mean...
I think you should police yourself. And I think if you're running for public office and you're representing, you should have integrity.
Yeah.
And I think your integrity should come into play, and it's on you as the candidate.
Well, I agree with that.
I'm not arguing with you, Roman, at all.
Oh, yeah.
If you're gonna do it, then you should have intestinal, intestinal fortitude to be like, I've got my 10 signs, and that's all I'm bringing today. So that's, that's just what I'm saying.
I agree with that 100% as a general matter, but if we're gonna create a law that says this, who's gonna enforce it? That's my question.
I will be told, yeah.
They enforce, but it would be much eas, well, it would be much easier to enforce 10 than it is to say where you can go. And if you say where you can go, then again, you're back to multitudes along the highway, like we had this time.
I would argue that's an easier way, because assuming there's like six candidates in an election, which happens normally in a mayoral election, if you have two candidates per race, then there's 60 signs you have to count, rather than, you can easily either drive by it or go in the parking lot and see there are no signs in the places we haven't allowed them, they're all where they're supposed to be, all good to go, and you leave, rather than one, two, three, four, and make sure each candidate has only 10.
Well, what's gonna happen is somebody's gonna count 11, and they're gonna call Shelley, and Shelley's gonna have to go to the parking lot and make somebody pull out one of their signs.
And see, are we gonna burden all of that over one sign now, you know?
It's already happening.
Yeah, I already police every morning, every afternoon.
I, okay, I'm still against the 10 sign thing, so...
I have a question, is when we get down to seven, and we've got four signs that can be carried, so those four signs would be part of the 10, was your intention?
So you carry four and place six, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, if that's what you choose to do.
Okay, so at this moment, then do we leave number two as it is?
No.
Yes.
I would strike it.
Nope. Okay, I guess we need to vote on each one separately as we go through, probably.
Yeah, you could.
Yeah, okay. Okay, Joe, did you want to weigh in on number, on 10 signs, or?
Like Roman said, I've had three elections, two, which we didn't have any signs. I'm happy with, not zero signs, but 10's plenty, I mean...
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion then for number two? For number two, we would eliminate the et cetera, and so it would end with posters?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
We have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Four, four opposed, one. All right. So number two is passes. Okay, I guess we needed to do that for number one, didn't we, Mike? We didn't vote on it. If we have consensus?
We had consensus.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, number three, no signs may be erected or placed in a public walkway, sidewalk, sidewalk, or thoroughfare. Any objections?
No.
One thing that I've seen in other regulations that are being added now, is we're talking about sidewalks, public walkways, thoroughfares, the part of the Texas Election Code that allows us to make all these regulations says that we can make regulations for electioneering at city-owned property. The sidewalk is not part of that property.
It is. We own it in trust from the state.
It's not part of the property where it's being, the polling place is happening. And that's what it says. We can only make reasonable regulations for electioneering on city-owned property when such property is used as an election polling place. So the sidewalk is not part of the property of the Calooc Theater, and therefore, it's not part of the property that's being used as a polling place. So we shouldn't be discussing things on the sidewalk.
I don't...
Unless it's by state law, no other than that.
I don't think I agree with you. For instance, I use, when I walk from City Hall to the polling place, I use the sidewalk presumably to vote. I think it's part and parcel of the Calooc Center in that case. I don't know what you're getting at either, because you can't, you can't be out there impeding traffic. You couldn't put your sign, let me finish, you couldn't put your sign in the sidewalk. So I don't know, if you, let me know what your concern is here, your specific concern.
Yes, my specific concern is that we are discussing regulations that state law allows us to make certain reasonable regulations, and these are what we're discussing right now.
Right.
And those regulations can only go as so far as they are on, they are regulating electioneering on city-owned or controlled public property when such property is being used as a polling, election polling place. So my concern is, we are now going further than the boundaries of the polling place and the property. We're going outside that and regulating those areas.
But would it not also be considered a walkway? And we can't obstruct the walkway?
If that's other state law, then fine. But all I'm saying is, in these regulations that we are discussing today, we cannot go outside the boundaries of that public property that is being used for the election polling place. That is what state law says.
Isn't the sidewalk part of the public place?
It's not part of the place.
I don't read the law like Mr. Garcia is reading it. I don't think we have a problem saying, including that as part of our electioneering regulations, to suggest that you can't put your signs out there, you can't, you know, impede the progress of using the sidewalk. Again, I think people use the sidewalk to get into the Calooc Center.
Yeah, you don't want to block the thoroughfare.
Well, then, Mike, no, well, that's already state law.
Well, a sidewalk is basically a thoroughfare, isn't it?
Well, it's different than state law. And so then how, what, now I'm gonna ask, how far are we gonna go for the sidewalk? Does that apply all the way down to courthouse or City Hall? Because you walk from City Hall...
It's the polling place.
It's the polling place.
Exactly. So look at the property boundaries of the polling place. You've gone outside them now.
We don't know. I mean, Mr. Garcia, I think you raised a...
I do know, I have the property map right here.
Well, I'm gonna make the argument that I think sidewalks in and around the Calooc Center, adjacent to the Calooc Center, are used as part of the polling place during the polling activities.
Are current political signs not allowed within any public...
Fifteen, yeah.
Isn't the sidewalk located within the public walkway?
That's what I'm saying. That's state law. So why are we putting that in these regulations?
If you're holding a handheld sign and you're walking up and down the sidewalk, then you're disturbing the thoroughfare, the walkway. Oh, yes, you are. You're impeding progress.
Hold on, no, you're not.
You don't, that's not necessarily true.
Thank you.
But I think we can use, let's just get to the point. I think we can use this ordinance, this electioneering ordinance, and apply it to the sidewalk in and around the Calooc Center. That's my opinion. I don't think, I don't think state law impedes us or restricts us from doing that.
I think it needs to be in there for, just for clarification.
I agree. I just think, you know, when you write laws, you want to be very clear on what you can. And I think if we were to take Mr. Garcia's view, I think then you're almost pushing people outside the boundaries of perhaps the property boundaries, and you're putting them on the sidewalk, which then I think may lead to problems.
And I think for policing purposes, it just, I think it needs to be there.
Would you like to make a motion?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. I'll make the motion to approve number three.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And we have four, four opposed. We have one, and it passes. Number four, signs must not prohibit visibility or traffic or obstruct the view of traffic.
Good.
Good for everybody? No signs, I'm sorry. No signs, no signs can be placed any closer than 100 feet from the polling location.
Good.
Do we have to include that if it's already state law?
I think it should be in ours, yes.
Okay.
Is it consensus?
Yes, yes. No signs will remain on the polling property, polling location property overnight. Any disagreement?
No.
Okay, number seven, no more than four signs per candidate may be carried on the controlled property being used as a polling place. Persons carrying signs must not impede the progress of voters and avoid walkways and thoroughfares, and must not prohibit visibility of traffic or obstruct the view of traffic. Personally, I don't think anybody should be able to carry a sign, but I guess I can't. We can't do that. Is it, it's, is that correct?
If we, if we're limited to 10, they can, you know, I mean, people carry signs. I don't see the big deal in it. It's just, they're limited to 10. That's all they get.
For me, that's where those people will be walking in areas that they should not be walking in, but...
I'd see this day.
So...
Comes after Monday.
So, okay, so let's clarify. Those four signs are part of the 10 signs in number two, right?
Yes.
The way I read it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Can we clear up that language? And if y'all are gonna do this, I'm gonna vote against it. But to make it clear for people to understand what the regulation is, I'm gonna at least try to represent that interest as well. Can we combine two and seven? That way it's clear that you have the total of 10, and that you can have no more than four carried. That way, because it's two different sections right now, and it seems a little confusing. Again, I'm already gonna vote against it, but I'd like people to be able to understand what these, what I believe are ridiculous regulations mean.
What do you think? Put them together? Would anybody care to that?
Wait, I read it, and I read it as no more than 10 signs, and then you have, you know, down the road there a little bit, you got it where it says no more than four of those four signs can be carried. So no more four of the 10 signs.
I think that would help.
I think that would help, and I do agree with Councilmember Garcia that we could combine them and just have it worded, no more than 10 signs per candidate may be placed, and no more than four of those 10 can be carried. And that 10 is the magic number, so...
Okay, so which do you want to do? Do we want to combine? Joe?
Sure, combine.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
All right, then we will combine number two with number seven.
Is that consensus?
And I believe that's consensus.
I would like my vote to go up against, just for the record. So, no, that's not a consensus.
Four, one. Oh, that's where you want to vote against.
Consistent with your previous action, why don't we make a motion for seven? The consensus was to combine it with two, but make a motion for seven.
Make a motion to combine number seven with number two, and make it a little bit more clear that the total is 10 signs and four of those 10 can be held. That's my motion.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Is that clear enough?
Yes.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We have four, four opposed. We have one. Okay, number eight, no one may post a political sign using posts that may damage subterranean water and electrical lines. For purposes of these regulations, the term "posts" shall include but not be limited to wooden stakes, rebar, PVC posts, metal posts. Heavy gauge wire is generally used for political yard signs and is allowed. All in, all okay with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Roman?
Yes, that's fine.
Consensus on number eight. Number nine, no one may post a political sign on any permanent structure, including buildings, fences, gates, and trees. Any objections there?
I have a question. It looks like that one was pulled from our existing ordinance, where it's subsection three. The current one says no one may affix electioneering sign, literature, or material. And this one only goes so far as to say "sign." I think in order to protect the city's property, if someone's trying to put up a tent, they don't tie their string to anchor their tent on any trees or any, you know, whatever's on the city property that is, fits within that category.
I'm okay with adding that, that, yeah.
Replacing it with...
Well, no, adding it, because we don't want people posting their signs on...
Political signs, materials, or what else did you say?
It says, well, right now it says electioneering sign, literature, or material. And so if that kind of goes to everything...
You're looking at number 10.
No, I'm looking at number nine. Right now it says, he's looking.
No, he's looking. He's looking at this right here. Okay.
So this is the existing ordinance?
Okay.
And I'm just trying to add...
But that's basic, yeah.
He just wants to protect integrity of any trees or shrubs or anything that's...
Right, for any material too.
So you want, you don't want to substitute, you want to add to number nine?
Correct.
Okay, what are you adding? This is...
Just the language that was in...
Yeah, number three.
Number three.
Yeah, in the existing ordinance.
Okay, so we're replacing, basically, number three for number nine.
If we do that, it also includes signs, so that kind of goes to the same effect, if y'all agree with that. You read number three?
Read number three.
Number three says it's unlawful to attach, place, or otherwise affix an electioneering sign, literature, or material to any building, tree, shovel, thump pole, or any other group of the polling.
That works for me.
So we'll just substitute, number nine will come out and be replaced by number three from the section 70-43. Number three. Okay, we probably better have a motion.
I'll make the motion to replace number nine with our current polling article, number three, with section 70-43, Regulations and Exceptions, item number three.
Second. We have a second. All in favor? We have a second, all in favor, a hand, and it's unanimous. Number ten, no one may post an electioneering sign in a polling place that exceeds thirty-six square feet, exceeds eight feet in height from the ground to the top of the sign, including any supporting poles, nor uses lights or any moving elements on controlled property being used as a polling place. Any objections?
I just wanna confirmation. What a moving element is considered?
Those.
Those little.
Yeah, those things.
How should I go?
I couldn't see that. You do it again one more time?
You know, you're on camera right now too, right? This is going on YouTube.
Does elements clarify what it is that we mean there?
Well, I just wanna make sure, cause you know, we have those, you have like the, um.
How about moving objects?
Any object.
If it's truly.
Wind blows all those signs.
I just wanna try to get, I'm understanding of, cause I know that was in previous and I know the language has tweaked a little bit, so I wanna try to understand what we're getting at so we can make sure it's clear. Cause when I thought moving elements, you know, you could see a flag can move with the wind. And so is that allowed? Or those things you put like in your gardens that spanak.
Mm-huh.
And what the names of those are. Thank you. Yes, and milk.
Pinwheel, yeah.
Those cannot place, those on them, like, how far are we going with moving elements?
Um.
We're going to micro- microscopic level.
We, we are.
Adams wiggle.
Would, would objects, uh, give you a clearer picture than elements? Does that make any difference?
Well, I mean, are we talking moving, are we talking about putting a sign on the bed or on the back of my Jeep and driving around the parking lot with that? Are we talking about American flags on top of signs that are gonna blow in the breeze? You know, I, I am all about America, all about our flag. And, you know, I don't think that should be, you shouldn't have that said, you can't have a flag. You shouldn't, you should be able to have an American flag if you want that. As far as the fancy thing.
You know what I'm talking about.
I know what you're talking about.
With the exception of an American flag? Could, could you leave this and then just leave the exception out?
No, well, because what if there's another object like those things that we're just talking about that have this detail of an American flag on them? I mean, I, I just think we need to be accurate as to what we're trying to regulate.
I think if we're gonna get that deep in the weeds, it, then we just need to say it can't be an American pinwheel. It has to be an American flag, if that's what we're gonna talk about.
Well, can't, don't we already say that nothing? Is it no sign or nothing can exceed that eight feet? Because if you have one of those blow things, usually does do exceed eight feet?
Yeah, they do.
So is that already not allowed if we have that type of language or?
Hopefully nobody was, and I know what we're doing here, but hopefully nobody is shoveling those bully while slinging things, but, um, but you never know. If we don't say it, then they can do it.
And particularly because we've gone through this again and have tried to be more specific, there are people sometimes who will try to take advantage of that. And I, we just need to be, make, make sure we're clear.
So what's the purpose, I guess? What are we trying to accomplish?
Mike, any suggestions on this?
Well, one, moving elements is in the current code and I don't think we've had any problems with that. Um, uh, our sign code does, uh, you know, I don't have it in front of me, but it defines the signs that you've depicted so artfully. But I, I, I would say if, if you just don't, you know, you want a sign that's, a sign, it doesn't have a bunch, you know, it doesn't have anything attached to it, then you would say moving element and you could probably even say moving elements or objects and leave it at that. I think that, that covers everything.
Or could we make it, we could make another one that says, American flags are allowed. And I know that's, that's all in general.
The only problem with that is whether the Texas flag or, you know, may, maybe they're.
Can we remove moving elements? Or does that open us wide up for this guy?
Well, it.
A miniature this guy.
Yeah.
Old wavy arm blow up thing.
Yeah.
We do define those, I forget how in the.
Looking for it.
Okay, in the sign code, but, um.
Okay, we need a decision, counsel.
Win person.
I mean, I agree with what it is and I agree, we just need to get the verbiage correct. And I think that's where we're at right now.
Uses lights.
You're out there during the daytime and everything has to be taken up. I don't, I don't think lights are an issue. We didn't have any carnival lights or, you know.
Yeah, I would say lights would not be an issue.
Can't leave it up overnight, so you're not gonna drop by and see it.
Did we have any, um, issues with any moving objects on any signs?
I don't think so.
And that's what I'm wondering, if we just strike it, I mean, unless we've had a history of some issue.
I don't, I don't.
There were, there were pinwheels out. We all had pinwheels out on top of some of our signs.
And flags, everybody had flags.
Yeah, I, yeah, we had flags. I didn't have any pinwheels, but yeah.
Well, and aren't we saying those would be things that would be at a tent? They would not be out?
No, for example, like some of us, I think all the candidates, actually the last day for like election day thing, we had our yard signs and when you have those type of yard signs, um, you have the holes where you can put the stakes in.
You stuck it in the top.
The very top, we would put flags or someone puts those wheels on them. So if we just strike it.
Well, but does it hurt to leave it? I mean, are we?
My only thing was it's, it's very general and those things, like what we did, would not be allowed anymore. And I think what we did was perfectly fine unless anybody saw anything contrary.
You know, it's, it's up to whatever council.
All right, I move, let's just get a motion so we can vote. I move to strike the language that refers to moving elements.
What, it does, are you including lights?
No, that stays.
Uh, I'm okay with that. I'll second that.
Okay, so we strike any moving elements?
None, yeah, moving elements, yes.
Lights or any moving elements, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. We will move on to number eleven. No one may post a sign that is larger than eighteen inches by twenty-four inches within ten feet of the public roadway adjacent to the polling place. Everyone okay?
Yep.
Consensus, Joe? Okay, Roman? Okay. Twelve, any political sign in violation of these regulations may be removed. A city staff placed in temporary storage, sign owner will be contacted or arrange a time during normal working hours to pick up the signs. If they are not picked up within five days, city will dispose of the signs. Everybody okay?
Yep.
I'd like to clarify the city staff. We currently have the city manager or designee. Um, just so it's clear on, within the city, who's actually gonna be doing that job. Yeah, that's.
I mean, I think city staff is fine. I mean, what more?
I mean, it could be somebody from Road and Bridge, it could be Shelley.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't see a need to go deeper than that.
My recommendation al- is always to put the city manager and designee just so that the city manager has the authority to do, you know, whether it starts with Development Services or City Secretary's Office or.
Okay, so change staff to manager.
Manager.
Yeah.
Or designee.
Or designee.
Or designee, right.
Are you good with that?
That's what I was suggesting. Appreciate Mr. Hayes jumping in, otherwise nobody else would agree.
You don't know that.
Okay, uh, are we, do we have consensus? Do we need to, a motion on that? We're good?
Yeah, that's good.
Everybody good?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thirteen, these regulations will be in effect from the date of approval. All right, we'll all be okay with that.
Well, the, the only issue there, since there'll be criminal penalties applicable to this, she's gotta publish notice of it and then it's ten days after that notice and so.
Oh.
If you'll just allow us to use the normal language, I think that'll help.
Do you want me to strike thirteen?
Oh, right, cause we're gonna have to have an ordinance come back to us, is what you're saying.
Right, right, and I can bring the ordinance back to the next meeting.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Do you want me to strike thirteen?
Well, part of it's there and part of it will be, uh, you'll do, you'll use your normal language, is what you'll do. Yeah, okay, so we've all agreed to let you do that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, sound amplification device or sound truck. Section sixty-one point zero zero four, the Texas election code sets forth the prohibition of using a sound amplification device to electioneer within one thousand feet of the early voting or election day polling place, electioneering for or against any candidate, measure, or political party. And for the purpose of this subsection, a person operates a vehicle loudspeaker if the person drives the vehicle or uses the loudspeaker or operates any sound equipment in connection with the loudspeaker. I, I get bogged down in, from the electioneering. Uh, what I've had was major or political party simply is not allowed. And then, uh, and then probably another sentence. And I also had added at any time during early voting or election day voting. Uh, and that had to do with the two sentences at the bottom of, of the first page. I, I felt like we needed to have at any time added.
Uh, anytime.
I had, at any time during, uh, it would, so it would say one thousand feet of the early voting or election day polling place at any time during early voting or election day voting. I don't, maybe that's understood. Maybe that doesn't need to be there.
So then maybe we just, cause I just brought up the election code that it refers to, why don't we just take that language and insert it into this section? Cause it covers that and it's straight to the point.
Which would be number?
In the election code, um, flip to the page back where you started reading there. And right there on the bottom. Wait, hold on, other page, you're right there.
Oh, oh, okay.
This is already, what we're talking about already is in the Texas election code.
Okay.
And we're referring it into our own regulations is what, is what it looks like in our own code. So what I would suggest is we just take what Texas law already has and insert it in there.
I don't know what's good with that. That takes care of it.
How's it worded? That's what I was gonna do.
Okay, uh, a commerce, a person commits an offense if during the voting period and within one thousand feet of a building in which a polling place is located, the person operates a sound amplification device or a vehicle with a loudspeaker while the device or loudspeaker is being used for the purpose of, one, making a political speech, or two, electioneering for or against any candidate, measure, or political party. And it'd be for the purpose of subsection of what I just read. A person operates a vehicle with a loudspeaker if the person drives the vehicle, uses the loudspeaker, or operates the sound equipment in connection with the loudspeaker. And this offense is, an offense under this section is a classy misdemeanor, which state law.
Okay, any objections, anybody?
I mean, that's what this really is, right, Mr. Hayes? It's just state law anyways, so.
Yeah. We don't have it in our current code, but we can put it in the.
Might as well reference it anyways.
So if, if we're, you know, if we're going to do that, if that's basically the same thing and maybe a little bit less cumbersome.
And we'll see another draft when you give us the ordinance, so we can have time from then until now and if you wanna give us anything that state law says between that period.
Now, um, the question I would have is that candidates or is that anyone coming from the outside?
It says a person commits an offense, so really anybody.
Anybody, okay, okay. All right, everyone in agreement with that, Joe?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, uh, let's, let's do a motion.
So then, Mayor, I'll move to replace all of the wording under sound amplification device or sound truck with the language that is in section sixty-one point zero zero four of the Texas election code.
Second?
So moved.
And we have it, all in favor, raise your right hand. And we are good there, all right. Okay, then. Okay, what about that last, that sentence up there? No one may disturb the peace or play music speaker over PA system, loudspeakers, bullhorns, or other amplification? Is, is basically what we're substituting, does it cover that or do we need this in addition?
It covers anything that is in connection with making a political speech or electioneering for or against a candidate or measure or political party.
Says, or uses the loudspeaker or operates any sound equipment in connection with the loudspeaker.
That's in there.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay, so we should be covered, right? Is that everyone?
This isn't in state law, this, this last part.
Not, not all of that, what I.
So this would be, this would expand on six, sixty-one point zero zero four. So I think council needs to decide, do you all wanna add this provision?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, you wanna make that motion?
Hold on, what, so we're adding?
This, the last paragraph.
Disturb the peace and music.
No one may disturb and.
Right.
To the end?
Right, yes.
Okay, the only concern I have is what if someone is playing music that is not, that doesn't have to do with electioneering? That's fine, right?
Well, we got turned in for playing our radio this last go-round and we weren't playing it loud, we were just playing it inside the tent. But it was, um, um, reported.
Yeah, that happened to me years prior too.
So, um, yeah, I remember.
But I think if you say no music can be played, then you don't have, you don't have to get into the, well, what kind of music is it and tell it, all those things.
Yeah, um.
Well, what I'm gonna get at now then
Well.
is we can only do regulations that are in connection with electioneering. So if someone's just playing music on their phone.
Well.
So, 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 um, how do we reword it so that you can play the radio inside your tent at a, that's not disturbing the peace? You know, it's not, the, it's not amplifying outside the confines of your tent.
But there are different.
But, but then.
Perceptions.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I mean, it, it all ties into disturbing the peace.
I was gonna say, I think that's, we have.
Standard. I, I don't remember, um, whether state law defines that term.
Not in what I just read, no.
No, right.
Okay, elsewhere?
Right, I think there's a, there may, no, I think, I think there is a penal code provision, but I think it's a la- laundry list of things that do disturb the peace.
Yeah.
I mean, if y'all, I mean, I guess, you know, again, I've, I've gotta bring back an ordinance. And so if you want me to, to include something like this or, or take a go of it, I could try to do that and, you know, match it up, align it with state law.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
But, but I do think, I, I mean, I wanna raise an issue that, uh, Mr. Garcia raised. I, I do think, you know, so if I'm walking in there with a cellphone and I've got the music going on it. I, I don't know.
Well, you know, um, listening to your music on your phone is a lo- I mean, is a lot different than screaming from your vehicle. You know, people in the parking.
Not to interrupt, but this, you know, does go on, I don't know, is this language from the counties? Do you remember?
Um, I think so.
Okay, I mean, clearly it talks about a PA system, loud speakers and.
Yeah.
So we, I may be able to bolster that as well to make it clear that, you know, it's ti- it's all tied to that.
And we have to be able to differentiate between, you know, what you're listening to or whatever in your own tent versus what's, you know, being heard by the public all, all around you.
Unless your tent is right next to somebody else's tent and your music is objective or is offensive to them.
Right, so, but my question is, what, how are we talking about this if the music isn't, doesn't have to do with electioneering? It's not making a political speech or the music is not advocating for or against any candidate or measure on the ballot?
Something disturbing the peace.
Well, right, so that, that's a whole different law that is not regarding electioneering. That's the thing.
Mike, why, why don't we let Mike bring it, bring back something and then we can.
I, I, I think, again, Mr. Garcia raises a good point, but I, I think you could say, electioneering, which is defined in our code, right out of state law, talks about including the use of tents. And if you're using a tent and music in conjunction with that use, I think, I think you get to that point. think you get to that point. You know, I'm just trying to capture y'all's interest as candidates over the years and what was, you know, what were problems out of the site?
Mm-huh.
And if music was one of those, let's, you know, if you want me to, I'll try to capture a way of limiting that problem.
I never heard loud music.
Mm-huh.
I never did. Now define loud.
Well, right.
You know, Roman's young, he can hear better than I can, you know, he went around artillery and stuff, but, you know, my definition of loud might be volumes, you know, eight on my thing or volume twelve on his, you know, it, it just depends. I mean, you, I think you're going to get into some real sticky situations if you start trying to define what's loud to one and what's not, what's loud to another, you know, it's a nominal volume, a minimal volume, you know, you can't set your volume more than two clicks. I mean, there's no way to, there's no way to really regulate how loud, how loud is loud.
We're in the weeds with this, yes.
Chief, I'm going to, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask you a question. What is y'all's ordinance on?
Disturbing the peace.
Or radios? Is it, is it like, if you can hear a hundred feet away from inside another vehicle or something? I don't know it, but.
Yeah, there's some, there's some distance and vibration and there's a lot of things that go along with that. As one thing that, from my perspective as a law enforcement officer, when you start trying to create exceptions, it creates a lot of problems for the person trying to enforce that. So it's much cleaner if it's either prohibited or is allowed.
Or allowed, okay.
To try to dial into, to, I want to be able to listen to my music in here and then, and then try to outlaw music, that makes it difficult for us to show up and try to make a decision and discern what, what the intent was. It's much easier if it's one way or the other.
One way or the other.
Thank you.
All right, so what do you want? You want it none or leave it open to let Mike see what he can come up with?
Well, I'd like to go ahead and say, I just found, Jeff, that state law does talk about the noise cannot exceed a decimal level of eighty-five.
No, no.
So that's already state law, and that's regarding disturb the peace. So what I would suggest is the police officer in their department already enforced that. So if we want to, let's just say no one may disturb the peace, period, and if all of that comes into play, then they can enforce it.
I think that would be better.
And I'll echo what, along the lines of Chief said, you know, we, we don't have, I think his, he may not even know this, but at one time his department had like one decibel meter. So when they get calls for, hey, my neighbor's got the music too loud, they're going to show up and the first thing they're going to do is, hey, your, your neighbor's complaining, can you just?
Right.
Do the right thing, be a grown-up and turn it down. And that's what they're going to do here, I don't, but you're going to want to give them the tool so they can show the ordinance and go, this is what you have to do.
Yeah.
You can't play music or, you know, along those lines, so.
Then let's just, uh, well, let's let you go ahead and, and do something there, but we will eliminate not playing music. It says no, nor, so when, when Mike does what he's going to do, it won't say, don't play music.
So you're just, are you saying it's just going to say, no one may disturb the peace?
Right, yeah.
Period?
Period.
Okay.
Period. And if somebody feels somebody's disturbing the peace, that's when we call in. Chief McCall.
Mm-huh.
Okay? Okay, so now, do we want Mike to do something more with this so we're clear, or do we want to keep what we've got here?
Do you think?
The rest of it?
Are you okay with it saying, no one may disturb the peace, or do you think it needs to go further than that?
Would you mind if I jump in? Mike?
No.
It's not a legal opinion, this is just from a management standpoint for the police chief.
Yes, no, please.
Is, is disturbing the peace is, is in the penal code already.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, and so the police chief get involved during an election timeframe where he has to come out and do disturbing the peace based on this is redundant, is, there's two, now he's got two sections that he's got to choose from, and it puts him in an awkward position. Once you place this in your electioneering, uh, code, that's me. That's from a management standpoint, I'd, I would like to uncomplicate that for the chief.
So simply saying, no one may disturb the peace should, should work, shouldn't it?
Well.
Well, we don't need it.
Well, my initial suggestion is just don't, we don't need any of that.
We don't need it.
Because it's already in the penal code. That's what you were kind of alluding to, right?
That's, that's, yeah.
Yep. So.
And that's, I was just.
Basically, like we did with election, electioneering, the election code sixty-one point zero zero four, just cite that.
Mm-huh.
But.
Yeah. If we could cite it, that'd be good.
Okay, so essentially, we don't, we don't need this.
Yeah, I move to strike that whole paragraph.
Okay. Because any one of those things is going to be disturbing the peace, we go back to Chief McCall. Okay. All right. Are you guys all in agreement with that? We strike the last paragraph.
That's fine.
Sure.
Jeff?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, we have consensus. We will strike the last paragraph. Okay, we're getting closer, gang. Campaigning. A candidate can have one tent set up in the east end Jefferson Street parking lot along the fence of the Calo property and St. Peter's property. I'm not quite sure, when you say east end, are we talking over off of, off of Jefferson Street?
Okay, now we're actually, yeah, we're talking that back entrance along that fence line that separates the church from the Calo.
Okay. But what about the front that separates where the Calo, there's parking space, Calo, and then right next to their, their parish hall, their, uh.
Back in the, back corner.
Yeah, that, that part will not be.
Yeah, no.
It's only that back part.
Yeah.
That's towards the USPS mailbox, isn't it?
Yes.
That's a concern I have already, is there's going to be a lot of people probably in that area, and I saw a number of people surprisingly. Because if that's where candidates have to set up now, you're going to have people in that area where also people are trying to drop off their mail. I saw a number of people surprisingly using that mailbox. I didn't know people used that there. My concern is now there's going to be a whole bunch of people and people are trying to drop off mail interfering with that area.
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't wanting it to be that close to Jefferson. I was wanting it to be kind of centrally located along the fence line, um, in, in the back of the Calo where, where it buds up to the wall of the church, not the parish.
Um, the thing that I was concerned about is if you had, I don't know, how many people do we have running this time? I, I'm not sure there's enough room there for that many people. Um, oh, I had thought if you, if you had them, and it's kind of, you come in on that kind of a circle, if, if you used also the right along Jefferson, just on the inside of Jefferson, of the parking lot.
I think too many people use that as an entrance to get in.
The inside of Jefferson?
Yeah, on the, right off of Jefferson.
Help me out here.
And you just, where you come in by their, their building over here.
Here, okay.
And, and, and use that. So they could still, they'd still have this entrance.
Yeah, but a lot of people use that, too.
Well, I mean, you're, you're.
What if in order to allow them to spread out, you allow them to use that whole, that whole line that divides the church and the Calo Theater anywhere along the, that border?
But you're saying all the way out to Main Street.
Right, any, anything, that way they can be spread out.
See, I didn't like them over here because that's an entrance.
That's an entrance, too.
Yeah, and, and I don't think we should have any tents near an entrance. Yeah.
So would you be okay keeping them relatively where they are now?
No.
Or where would you want to move them?
I think they need to be moved. And now maybe, maybe you do this and, and, but see, then they come in right beside you there, so, I mean, they have choices, they have choices, but I just don't think you should be out, out here, and I don't think you should be out here.
Yeah.
I really think this is the best place, but.
Well, that place, and what you're talking about is that other entrance to the Calo Theater, that far side on Jefferson, because there's two entrances there, there's one near the, the mailbox, and then there's the other one you're talking about, they should be in that parking lot near the Playhouse.
Mm-huh.
I think that is, in order for voters to be able to, because I personally, too, also like to talk to every, every candidate, just say hi or whatever, and I think voters like to see that their candidate is present and has a representation at the polls. That puts them very far away and people voting.
I think that's important.
May not even see that.
Well, but that's for me, that's, they need to be away. All of this, in my estimation, should be left for people to park and not have to drive past anybody.
Yep.
So you could even, you could use this and you could use this, and, and nobody can go beyond that.
The problem is, you're talking about not wanting people near entrances and exits, that's right next to an entrance and exit.
Well, but you've got one, two, three of them over here.
So then what's the problem about putting them right here and you have one, two, three there?
Well, again, to get to this parking lot in here, you've got to drive past yous everywhere here.
You can use here, here or there. You can drive in that way. See, it's the same thing, so you're talking about you don't like my idea because you don't like it's near an entrance. Your idea of putting them is still near an entrance.
Well.
So you're saying there are three other options, that's the same with my idea.
Yeah, I would just, basically, my idea is.
We could just prioritize the voters getting in that door and not be camp right with that, trample through us.
You just, you just, this is just kind of shut off and it's not even used as an exit to get in. By doing, by putting everybody.
Can I see that?
Yeah. Here, there's a different one out here where you can.
Okay, so here's, here's the Jefferson Street.
Yes, so there's an entrance here, okay? Yeah, there's an entrance here, okay? There's an entrance here, and there's an entrance here, and I wanted to put everybody right there.
But see, can we, I don't think we can block in the entrance or exit for emergency purposes. And so you're saying, that one, well, the mayor said if they're all through, they're going to block that entrance and exit.
What I was going to do is to put, use this and use this for candidates, and just shut that off.
Mm-huh.
Right here. But the people still have, they have to drive in past them. So, and I guess there's no place that you wouldn't have to, but I just don't think they should have to drive in past any of them, any, any tent. They should be able to come into that parking lot from, from over here or back over here or back here and go right in, go, go park, go in and vote and not have to pass any tent.
Well, I think the majority of your traffic's going to come in. You'll have some that comes in here, maybe a little that comes in here, but I still think that area right there is the best place for the tents.
If you have enough, if you have enough candidates, that you're not going to have enough room there, so. So, Joe?
Council, I do just want to make sure the.
There's a lot of room there, there's.
The areas you're referencing are parking spaces, correct?
Yes.
Because we do want to make sure we're calling it about fire lanes and maintaining that, so we just need to make sure, I, I'm, I'm not seeing where y'all are visually looking at, I just want to make sure you're looking at parking spaces.
At least twenty-one parking spots along that fence.
Okay, but is each tent going to go right smack dab up next to the tent, next to it? How many tents are we going to have at any given time? Six?
Mostly, most six.
Six?
Six, probably.
Well, but you could have, but you could have, you've also got, well, but this doesn't apply to them, school board.
Because if, if they're using our property.
Okay, then it will, so you could have school board.
It could actually come around this way a little bit, um, you know, if we had to, but where's, where's that thing that you, where's the map?
Oh, the printout?
Yeah, I brought a printout.
Um, what if, what if you did, what if you did the, um, the, this, this inside in here? You could do it on both sides, and so, so you're not blocking any of those.
But then everybody coming in.
But, but very few people come over here, and they can go, they could, uh, they can go through the post office thing and then come down.
Can I make a suggestion?
Please.
Yes.
I would just say, no tents within X number of feet of the doors of, of the polling place. That way they could, they could be on Jefferson Street, they could be up against the church, but they just can't be blocking the entrance. You have a radius, you can't be within that area.
And right now it's one hundred, but we should be on that and.
Just so people could park and get in there. I, uh, I don't know how to solve it, but.
Can I see the map?
But I hope we do soon.
Yeah. We have bigger fish to fry than these regulations.
You'd like to go home, right?
You, you could do that, push them back and maybe, um, set up, and I'm not suggesting you can do that tonight, you may not with limited number of maps, but set up a designated area and then you just rotate it on a, on a daily basis so that, you know, if, if, if there's obviously strategic areas that are closer to the doors, you just rotate it on a, you know, Shelley does this all the time, you know, with a, you know.
A drawing?
Yeah.
The other thing we could do, uh, I mean, it's getting late, and, um, we could postpone the campaigning, we could put it off until next, the next meeting, if you wanted to. Look at, look at it a little more closely, um, that type of thing.
I mean, I'm glad we're having this conversation, I am, but it's hard to come up to a consensus.
Well, that's what I was thinking, if maybe we, uh, we spent some more time looking at the parking lot.
Mike, go wrong, but don't say it.
I was about to say, don't you dare.
Um, and, and it just, and take this part of it, uh, since we've got the other done, take this part of it, but.
And bring it back into ordinance?
Well, we need to approve this before it would come back as an ordinance.
Okay.
So.
So can we table this, at least that item conversation and go finish the rest of them if we have, if there's anything else?
Finish the rest of them, no, we can, we can see. Let's try it. A candidate representative should arrive at the polling grounds no more than thirty minutes before the polls open, should depart thirty minutes after. We're good with that, right?
Um, no, a candidate represent, or representative, we have to be careful because there are also poll watchers who can stay after the polls close to watch the closing of the polls, follow the ballots, and if we're saying a candidate or representative, a poll watcher by law is considered a representative of the candidate, and if we're saying they have to, they depart thirty minutes after the polls close, that would infringe on the poll watchers' right to do their job.
Is, is not this provision intended to be applicable to like their, their stuff, their signs, their tents?
I think that's what, that's what.
So that's what we're talking about, so why don't, why don't we just add that?
Okay. Okay, so what words would you use, Mike?
Um.
For, um.
I don't know, campaign materials, tents, chairs, what, signs.
Okay. Okay, is, is everyone okay with that? That we, that has to do with campaign tents?
It's fine.
Signs, et cetera, okay? All right, do we, are, are you good, consensus is okay on that one? We don't need to do a vote? Okay.
Mayor, if it's helpful, I did pull up the GIS system and that entire back row on the eastern portion of the property, uh, it's approximately two hundred and forty feet from the entrance, uh, so, um, if you had a restriction inside of two hundred and forty feet, that would essentially allow, um, all of that area of the parking lot directly adjacent to the primary entrance to the voting location, uh, would all be buffered from the tents.
Okay, so it would take care of?
For what it's worth.
All?
It would essentially provide tents to be allowed on the, the eastern boundary and then the, the northern, uh, area.
Oh, okay.
Not to be a stickler, but it's, I think it's the southeastern boundary.
Yes, sir. But also along the east, the full eastern boundary.
So, and what was your number?
Curville East.
Two forty. All right, what, what do you all think of that?
Yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't put them on the fence, doesn't put them where I had suggested. It doesn't, it doesn't put them on the fence, doesn't put them where I had suggested. They have that option.
I'm sorry, I'm a visual learner, so I have to be able to see where you're, where you're looking at. If you don't have it right now, that's fine.
I think what he's saying, all of this would, if we were beyond this, it'd be two hundred and forty feet.
I'm a daytime learner.
So anywhere in this area?
This or this or that.
But that would also allow here, because this is beyond the two hundred, it would be a radius.
Well, I'd want it to be all of that, so we'd have to come out.
That's the part I don't agree with. So what, what if we just stuck with the, with the radius? Oh, God.
Well, let's, let's do what we were doing before. Let's, let's hold, let's wait on that one.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Then, a candidate representative must adhere to the one hundred foot rule and not cross within one hundred feet of the bowling lo- polling location in order to campaign. That could change?
No, that's state law, so that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, but we could be, okay, all right. Okay, we're all good with that one?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Candidates, representatives may not accost, harass, or intimidate any citizens traveling to and from the polling locations.
True.
Okay? Okay. A candidate representative must not block the sidewalk, the parking lot, or impede a person's progress. Good with that?
That's war one, I'm going to eject, eject again for the reasons I said before. About the sidewalk part. About the sidewalk part.
Okay, but we, we're leaving it in on the other one. Do, do we need a vote on that?
I would ask, just so it's on the record.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept this? I will make a motion that we accept a candidate representative must not block the sidewalk, the parking lot, or impede a person's progress. Second, thank you, all in favor? Right hand, we have a four, four, and opposed, one. Citizens do not have the right to file harassment.
They do have the right.
And.
Citizens do have the right.
Yes, I was going to say, that's not right. Do have the right to file harassment and press charges. We're good there.
Do we need that in here?
You don't, in answer to your question, you don't need it.
Okay.
Put the chief's personal number in there, too.
Yeah, we can take it now.
Yeah.
Okay, we will, all in favor, we delete that last one?
Yes.
All in good with that? Okay.
Okay.
All right. So, do we want to go ahead and direct staff on everything except that one item?
And if you have that one item?
Well, we would wait and come back with suggestions.
If you want to make your recommendation for the two hundred and forty foot radius, we certainly could provide both an exhibit to what that radius looks like, and that may be helpful for you all to deliberate when you look at it.
Okay, yeah.
You could come in that to whatever distance you feel is appropriate.
And then we can take it out then, if, if more changes.
Or just eliminate it entirely.
Okay.
Mr. Hoppy, I hate to ask this, but on P and Z, when we were going through the STRs, Michael, you know them, we had, when we were talking about the two hundred and fifty foot radius, the hundred foot radius from any other.
Mm-hmm.
They were able to call up the, the mapping system and show, would that be a possibility at the next meeting to show exactly where we're at on that?
I think we can show you an exhibit and we can have multiple distances if you'd like, we could put it at two hundred and, two forty, or whatever you desire.
That would be suitable.
Could you, if you could provide us what those radiuses are, we could.
Okay, we start at two forty?
Yeah.
And just look and see where we're at at two forty.
You can do that.
Do it in cubits.
Okay, I, do we need an overall? No, we're good, we've done the individuals. Okay. All right, gang, we have done this, and we have one item left, seven A, appointments to the Economic Improvement Corporation.
Six A. Oh, never mind, I'm sorry.
Well, it is six A, it is. It's, it's both of them. So, do we have a motion? No, I don't need a motion, I'm sorry. Well, we, yes, we do need a motion because we're going into executive session.
So you're going to discuss EIC in executive session?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. So do I have a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you move that we.
Move we go into executive session under section five five one point zero seven four.
Thank you, Joe. A second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And at nine fifteen, we will recess upstairs for executive session.
Sorry to interrupt, mayor, but do we have to have a motion about economic development projects at eight?
I think it's going to be too late.
No, let's do it.
I mean, that's, that's just under.
Yes, but I think, but we, as long as we don't, we, we, no, we are not going into executive session for that tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Do y'all need something for that?
We certainly can wait on it. If council desires, we would ask that you take that in consideration, your future agenda items, because we may need a special meeting for another night.
Would it be lengthy, or is it something we can discuss now?
It is going to be a lengthy discussion.
Got you. Well, I'm up for it, y'all are, so.
I think so.
Okay. All right, at nine forty, we will reconvene with city council, and we do have appointments to make. So I would like to make a motion that we appoint, reappoint Greg Appel, Kim Clarkson from, as a council liaison. I would like to appoint.
Joe Herring?
Joe Herring. Ah, it's, it's, we've had too much. And then a new appointee also is Celeste Hammond. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And we have four, four, opposed, one.
Nothing against you, you know that.
All right. We have, is there anything that, and thank you to all the candidates who did apply. We had wonderful, wonderful applications and we just appreciate their interest, appreciate their willingness to give of their time and their, their personal life as they do this. So we thank them very much. Is there anything for future council meetings from anyone?
I have a whole long list, you want to see it, mayor? No.
You did want to.
Okay, one thing I wanted to ask is if we can have either an agenda item at our next regular meeting or a, call another meeting to discuss the recruitment plan and provide input on various areas regarding the city manager search process. It's my understanding that there are going to be one-on-one meetings, a series of meetings with individual council members. I'm perfectly fine, and actually, I responded to Mr. Myers with clear career, I think, and he called me and he was like, yeah, that's, I definitely understand that, if that's what you're wanting to do. He goes, he said he's flexible with whatever we want to do. I'm comfortable having all of us leave our input in a meeting rather than having a series of meetings outside of a publicly scheduled meeting. And so that's what I would like to see happen.
I'm sorry, tell me what you're asking again?
Yes, either a separate agenda item on our next regular meeting, this is up for discussion, whatever you want to do, or we call a special meeting to obviously go into executive session because personnel matters regarding the city attorney, or city manager, and discuss with our, the firm that the city has hired, and then provide the input and everything that we want.
So you want to do it collectively as opposed to individually?
Yes.
Ah, well, Mr. Myers had asked, he wanted to meet one-on-one with each of us, I mean, that was his request.
Right. And, and when I told him, I just asked, is there any reason why you prefer to do it that way rather than us all get in the woodroom and talk about it? And he said, well, it's more of an informal discussion. He goes, but I have no problem with doing it all in one. He goes, it's totally up to the council. And I said, well, we have a meeting, this call was yesterday, he called me. And I said, well, we have a meeting tomorrow, I'll bring it up with council, see if they want to do a, a meeting where we can all do, provide our input together. And he goes, whatever y'all want to do. He goes, I, I'm up for just doing whatever's best for the community, so.
I don't want to cancel the meeting I have with him on Thursday. I'd like to actually visit with him one-on-one.
Joe, any thoughts?
Yeah, I feel like a one-on-one, I can be fairly frank.
I mean, it was fine with me, I, I, actually, I appreciated the one-on-one. I, I had kind of thought it probably would be a group, and, and I was.
Happy to have.
Yes, yes, that, that we would each have our own time with him. So, so do we have a second to, to Roman's request of? Okay, I guess we won't move forward.
That's fine, thank you. Second was, there's a declaration of disaster that we normally had on our agendas, our direction of council, and that was removed, and we haven't gotten an update on that. I just want to make sure if we can get an update on what's going on with that, if we're still in effect and why we haven't been briefed on that in the last, for a while now. And then lastly, as we saw tonight, we took over an hour on these electioneering rules, and respectfully, that's why I put my yellow sticker on at our annual retreat on that one item, because I feel we've just got a lot bigger fish to fry than spending over an hour on those rules. So we had gotten input from staff that we have a lot of ordinances and other items that are in the works and some that are all ready to be presented to us. So my request is we be mindful of the time that we are taking every single, twice a month, and get those important items on our agenda, and make sure we really do the city's business and get, get those important things done. I know we got a lot of that stuff that we can work on rather than what we did today.
I'm not to disagree, but I thought, I thought the electioneering stuff was important, especially in that we're trying to give priority to the voters rather than the campaigners.
No, and I get that, I just, I think there's more important things we can be.
Well, I think, I, I think we all agree with that, but I think it was important because of some of the things that, that we've experienced in the past, so I, it was a long time and, and yes, I have to.
Worth every minute.
There's lots of things that need to be taken care of, but once it's done, it's done, so.
It takes a while, but I, Roman, I think everything we did tonight had some. I mean, it's, you know, I've got wife at home at nine forty-five, she's probably already in bed.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's, it's what we signed up for, so.
No, and I have no problem with it, I don't have time to spend on things, it's just what we're focusing our energy and time on that matters to me. So if we're here till ten or eleven focusing on a lot of other things, let's do that. I'm, I'm up for that, but those are the things, I think we have other things down the road we can get done, let's, let's do those things.
Yeah, and I think, I think with the electioneering, I think one of the things that we are all concerned about is the, when, for, the ability for people to come and vote and be able to do it uninterrupted, unintimidated, that's been, that's been something I've felt forever, that I just, I, I didn't, I'd never like to go vote because there were people out there and, and, you know, that, that bug me. I'll do this on my own. And so, so I think, I think it was something that we can do and have done, will do, will be doing for the public, so.
Fair point, yep.
Okay, at nine forty-eight, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, we were.